We may begin.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, October 21, 2024. The time is 2:11 PM and we are in the Building and Safety Boardroom at 201 North Figaro Street, ninth floor, Los Angeles, California. I am Vice President David Nash and I'll be chairing this meeting in President Mason's absence. The following commissioners are present. Commissioners Farmby, Lim, and Melendez. I'm going to go over some housekeeping items before we get started. This meeting is being recorded, therefore we ask that when addressing the commission, you speak close to the microphone and only one person speaks at a time. Please state your name each time you speak. Members of the public who wish to only listen to the commission meeting and not provide public comment may call council phone at 213-621-2489 or 818-904-945. This meeting is also being livestreamed. Individuals who wish to watch this meeting may do so by visiting cannabis.lacity.gov. We will be following the agenda order for the most part. Agendas are located on the table by the entrance door along with speaker cards. Individuals who are physically here and wish to address the commission must fill out a speaker's card and specify which item or items you're going to speak on. Individuals can provide public comment or comments about a specific agenda item in person or virtually via the Zoom link provided on the agenda. If you are present at the meeting, please fill out a speaker card and turn it into Irene or Josie. When I call your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name. If you are in the Zoom call, when the item you wish to speak on is called, press star nine to get the speaker's name. The commission executive assistant will call out each speaker by the last four digits of their phone number to identify the caller. The caller will be prompted to unmute themselves by dialing star six. We will consider general public comment and single or multiple agenda items together. Therefore, speakers will have one minute for general public comment and one minute per item with a maximum of two minutes for multiple items. In total, an individual speaker shall be limited to three minutes of public comment per meeting. Representatives from neighborhood councils who have filed a resolution for a community impact statement with the city clerk, which relates to any agenda item, will be given time to speak during the item itself. Please provide a copy of the filed statement or resolution to the commission executive assistant. Any neighborhood council representative speaking on behalf of their neighborhood council must provide a letter on their letterhead stating the neighborhood council's position on the matter. Absent any neighborhood council documentation, comments may still be provided during the public comment period. We ask that speakers state whether they are providing general public comment and/or which other item or items they are speaking on before they begin to comment so that staff can appropriately time them. If the speaker does not specify which items they are speaking on, one minute will be provided. PowerPoint presentations presented to the commission today, whether it's by the department or applicants, will be posted online and made available to the public via DCR's website within two business days. For those attending the in-person meeting, please be aware that after 6:00 PM, if you leave the ninth floor and wish to return, you will need to check in with security on the first floor to re-enter and access the elevators to the ninth floor. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate so as not to disturb the proceedings. Please be respectful. Disruptions will not be tolerated. If you disrupt the proceedings, you will receive two warnings. If you continue the disruptive behavior, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Start with item number one, report from the executive director. Ms. Garakian, is there a report?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Klean, Assistant Executive Director. Yes, there will be a report today. It's going to be a two-pronged report. So I'm going to briefly go over some of the items that were discussed last meeting as it relates to taxes and some of the fees that are due that folks had concerns about, just so that the commission is aware of those issues. And then Ms. Garakian is next door at our social equity individual applicant stakeholder meeting and she is aware that the meeting is starting and she will be over shortly to finish up the executive director presentation.
Sounds good.
So for now, I will focus on the taxation issue. As members of this commission know, there's a variety of taxes that all businesses are subject to. At the local level, businesses are subjected to the gross receipts tax. For adult use sales, the gross receipts tax is 10%. For medical use sales, the tax rate is 5%. And then for any of the non-retail activities such as distribution, cultivation, and testing, the tax rate is 1% to 2%. So if a business makes a sale of $100, if it was an adult use sale, there would be a $10 tax on that $100 purchase. When businesses report their receipts for non-retail activities, of course, it's a significantly smaller tax. At the state level, the state has a number of taxes. And when the commercial cannabis regulations were adopted at the state level, each business in the vertical chain was assessed different numbers of taxes. The state legislator, Slater, voted to move a lot of those taxes to the retailers at the end point. So you can think about, you know, Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Diego, Oakland, a lot of the major cities that do have a robust retail market. We don't have the votes to shut down a vote that shifts that tax burden to the retailers when a lot of the jurisdictions in the state don't actually allow for retail sales in their jurisdiction and they're only licensing cultivators and manufacturers. So the taxes that were used to be excised on those activities have been shifted to retailers. And that, of course, is outside of the city's purview. And then, of course, you have federal taxes. And because cannabis is prohibited at a federal level, the normal business expenses that businesses would write off to reduce their tax obligations are not applicable. And that is a third tax burden on those businesses. The reason I bring this up is, you know, a lot of folks come and talk about the local taxes and the burden that it creates, but the local taxes are actually the least amount of the taxes that are being applied. And those taxes are going to support public safety measures, public work measures, homelessness initiatives. So any type of reduction the policymakers make to that, it doesn't reduce the services that DCR is able to provide to our applicants and licensees because we're a full-cost recovery. What it does is it reduces the unrestricted general fund monies that are currently going to support homeless initiatives, public safety, and public works projects, which, of course, puts our political bodies, our mayor and our city council behind the eight ball because something that would be best addressed by the state or the federal government is being sought to be addressed here and we need those general funding monies for those programs. Secondly, I just wanted to talk about renewal fees and the fees that have been assessed. In 2023, DCR shifted our entire market from the temporary approval process into the annual license application process. As part of that shift, the director used her authority to defer the annual license application fees so that we could start moving more people through licensure. At this point, now folks are starting to get their annual licenses from the department and those fees have become come due. So we have assessed the annual license fees for all of the applications that are in our pipeline. For folks that have already received an annual license, they got the default 30 days to pay those fees. And then for businesses who have not yet received their notice of complete application or received a license, they got an additional 60-day deferral approved by the director. So all of those annual license fees, depending on when they were assessed this year, are due no later than the end of this calendar year. We also started our renewal process September 2nd. And that's a separate set of subset of or a separate subset of fees. For businesses that have to renew their record, they don't have temporary approval or license, the renewal fee is $1,829. For businesses that have received temporary approval, the renewal fee is $4,233. And then for businesses that have received their annual license, the renewal fee for that license is $8,486. And those fees are based on the different requirements that each of those applicants or licensees have to adhere to during the calendar year. At the local level, our licenses and records are valid for a calendar year. So January 1st through December 31st is the year for which people pay fees. So if an applicant applied in July 1st of 2024 and we process the application, they have local compliance underway, then they would be required to pay a renewal fee for the record for calendar year 2025. If that same business applied in July and they received temporary approval before September 2nd, now they would have to renew not the record for 2025, but rather their temporary approval for 2025. And then, of course, if they got their annual license, they would be paying the annual license fee for 2025. The highest fee is the 8046 and that is the maximum a applicant or licensee would pay to renew an activity. So if they, you know, started as just a record and then they got temporary approval and then they got their annual license, it's not like each of those three fees would be assessed. The farthest they reached in our process for that calendar year would be reflective of the P they would pay for the following year because that renewal fee, of course, is for 2025. And those are the big issues that I wanted to address with this body today. And I know the director will be coming in just a minute to walk through our commercial cannabis licensing numbers, which are on the screen. So if you bear with me a minute, I can pop next door and ask her to come back in.
Oh, just this is Vice President Nash. Just wait one second. Does anybody have any questions regarding this part of the presentation?
This is Commissioner Melendez. Is there any way we can get a printout of all this information you're passing on to us?
Absolutely, Commissioner. We will, I will prepare slides. I did a question and answer session on Wednesday of this week. We do have slides prepared for that. So it's up to the commission whether or not you would like me to include those slides as part of the presentation, the executive director's report for the next commission meeting, or if you would just like us to transmit this information as a standalone correspondence.
For me, Commissioner Melendez's correspondence is fine.
Yeah. I'll get that over to Josie as soon as possible.
Thank you. This is Vice President Nash. I had two questions. Did you mention the percentage of taxes at the state level?
The taxes range from about 20% to 35%, depending on the activity. At the state level, things such as sales tax and excise taxes are included in the full number that they report. But for example, if a business comes to the podium and says that they're paying 37% in taxes and they're a retail storefront business, only 5% to 10% of that amount would be associated with the local tax. And then the remainder would be associated with the different state taxes. And of course, if a cultivator was to come here, you know, they're taxed at a 1% to 2% rate based on the activity. So if they're paying 37%, 35%, you know, of those taxes are being collected for the state's process.
Thank you. When an applicant that has an annual license and they go to renew that next year, will they also be paying the $8,400 and change for the license fee that year?
Yes, for the renewal fee, they would be paying that amount.
Thank you. Ms. Garakian, do you have an additional part to add to the report?
Is there a next slide? Oh, great. Oh, let's go back to the previous slide. I'm sorry, everybody. We simultaneously have a social equity, social equity working group happening in the other room. And so I was just talking with those folks about a legislative package we just submitted to council yesterday for some proposed changes. So if the commission has any questions about that, they cannot ask them according to Allison, our attorney. Sorry, sorry, guys.
Thank you.
Wanted to talk about it, but I can't.
Much appreciated.
But if anybody has questions about it, they could just email me. Michelle.garakian@lecity.org. Happy to email you back, including the commissioners. So this is a new, this is not a new thing, but this is going to be something that's part of our, our bi-monthly presentation to you. And I think this was something that was asked by President Mason last time is to have an update on our licensing numbers, including our social equity licensing numbers, our complaint portal, and I believe licensing and social equity. So these are our total amount of licenses here. You can see it on the screen. We have a total of 294 retail licenses, 118 delivery, non-volatile manufacturing, distro, cultivation, testing lab. And then of the 294, 133 of those are social equity retail licenses. As you can see, we have 117 social equity delivery licenses, which makes up the majority of our delivery licenses because those are only available to social equity applicants. 63 non-volatile, 76 distro, and 81 cultivation. So this is also, you know, we'll provide this to you guys and to the folks that are listening in here today. Next slide, please. So the complaint portal, DCR, this is a disclaimer for everybody, but DCR has no purview over illegal enforcement, illegal cannabis enforcement in the city of Los Angeles. Some days do I wish we did, yes, but we don't. That role falls to the LAPD and the city attorney. Now, how does DCR play a role in all of this? We operate the city's cannabis complaint portal. Now, you can find that at, you can find that on the front of our webpage. But essentially, in a nutshell, this is how it works. You submit a complaint about an unlicensed business. We get it. We forward it over to PD. We tell them they're unlicensed and then PD does their stuff. Alternatively, maybe you report it directly to PD. PD comes to us. They say, is this unlicensed? We say, yes. They go do their stuff. After that, DCR doesn't really have much of a role there other than essentially taking that location and striking it from the ability to locate a licensed business there for the next five years and that's part of city law. Does that make sense? We could talk about that. But our complaint portal, since 2018, we've had it. We've had 9,000 complaints. 2,000 of those have been referred to PD. We've closed 6859. Why have we closed so many? Well, we've sent a lot to PD, but a lot of them were about things that were not cannabis-focused whatsoever. Like people are eating Kit Kat and throwing the trash on the floor. Okay, great. They do that in front of CVS. Why is that a problem here? So a lot of the stuff that's not cannabis-related, we closed it. And then we currently have 241 businesses that are under CED investigation. What does that mean? These are licensed businesses that are not in compliance with the city of LA. Next slide, please. And that's the end of my presentation, but does the commission have any questions?
This is Commissioner Melendez. If we can go back to the very first slide?
Yes, sir.
So it says, so the numbers I have in front of me are the actual numbers that have been permitted.
Yep.
It's not the max number. What would the max number of allowable retail licenses for the city of Los Angeles be?
For retail licenses right now, it is no, no. Jason's going to provide a, I'm going to be, bless Jason, but he's going to provide a much more complex answer. I just want to keep it as simple as possible. Right now, there are, I'm going to say, how many people live in the city of LA, Jason? Okay, he says, I'll keep it simple, 400 to 500. It is one, one retail business per 10,000 people. Okay. And then that is split into depending on how many people live in a community plan area. Some community plan areas are much more populated and some are not. So.
Then this Commissioner Melendez again, the testing labs. So we have eight official testing labs that are permitted for the city of Los Angeles currently in operation?
Yes.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, any other questions? All right. Yeah. I mean, you did ask this question, so I'm going to actually provide a further answer for you about, I mean, you could probably say if we have 400 to 500 licenses that could be cited in the city of LA and there's only 294 right now, that means that there's plenty left to give, correct? So the question is, is what's the plan with that? If someone would like to email me to understand the report that we just sent in that I can't talk about right now, it will discuss the plan for that. So, thank you.
This is city attorney Allison Toll. Perhaps we could agendize that for a future meeting.
Yeah, we could do that next time. Yeah. All right, with that, I gotta go. Thank you, everybody.
All right, let's move on to item number two, commission business. Commissioners, you should have an advanced calendar in front of you with our future meeting dates. Please take a look and let everyone know if there are any planned absences.
This is Commissioner Melendez. I am not sure about November the 21st. I can make myself available, but if I, if I could skip that meeting, it would probably be a lot easier for me to navigate November 21st.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the approval of minutes, we were sent the minutes of October 17, 2024 for review. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner Farmby. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Melendez, a second.
Ms. Teresa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Farmby.
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lim.
Aye.
Vice President Nash.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Moving on to commission announcements and updates, commissioners, are there any announcements or updates? Hearing none, we'll move on to future agenda requests. Commissioners, are there any future agenda requests?
This is Commissioner Farmby. I would like to potentially discuss, you know, how do we address applicants who are not able to be present here? I think that if we can at least set an expectation or create a process around folks who are not able to attend regardless by phone or in person, that we can get notified of that. And if that's not the case, how do we, how do we address it? And we've had quite a few applicants that have come before us who have kind of been here from the beginning all the way to the end, spending their time of going through this process. I think that the expectation should be set the same for every other applicant, right? And I'm not saying that they have to sit through the process, but at least be present for their item on the agenda. I would at least like to discuss that in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number three, neighborhood council presentation. This is a reminder that any representatives from neighborhood councils who have filed a resolution or a community impact statement with the city clerk, which relates to any agenda item, will be given time to speak during the item itself. Please provide a copy of the filed statement or resolution to the commission executive assistant. Any neighborhood council representative speaking on behalf of their neighborhood council must provide a letter on their letterhead stating the neighborhood council's position on the matter. Absent any neighborhood council documentation, comments may still be provided during the public comment period. Item number four. We will now open general public comment and single or multiple agenda items. Speakers can address the commission on non-agenda related items that are within the jurisdiction of the commission or provide public comment for items in today's agenda. If you are listening on the livestream and have called to provide public comment via Zoom, please mute the livestream audio before you begin speaking to eliminate feedback. We will alternate between calling up individuals who are here at the meeting and those on the call. Please be patient with us. I have at least once, I have two speaker cards. Is there an Alfred Torregano?
Vice President Nash, I believe he's in the meeting next door. So can we skip to the next?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I believe that speaker is in the next room. So can we skip to the next?
Okay. Let's skip him and go to Madison Shockley. Oh, there he is. Alfred Torregano.
Sorry.
Hi, this is City Attorney Allison Toll. Can you, I'm sorry, sorry. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Madison Shockley.
Okay, so I believe that this is a different speaker from the one that you called Commissioner Nash. Okay. If you'd like, proceed with Mr. Shockley's comic card. You can do so.
I can wait.
No, you're up here. That's fine.
Just state your name and which items you're speaking on. What items are you speaking on?
General comment.
Just one.
Okay, my name is Madison Shockley. I'm a social equity entrepreneur licensee here in Los Angeles and been a part of this process for over six years now. I opened my retail store about a year and three months ago. At this point, the taxes are really just killing my business. It's just an unsustainable business model, having to pay 35% taxes. My rent is already high because of my cannabis business, have no access to capital. And even compounding that challenge is not getting funds from the DCR. So there's funds that have been allocated to us from the state that have been sitting in the city and they haven't been able to distribute it to us. And we were just notified a couple of days ago that because they didn't meet a deadline, that money was going to be diverted to fee deferrals or fee waivers. But there's also a new fee apparently that we have to pay for our renewal and that's going to absorb that fee.
Thank you.
So literally the money that we were supposed to get that we desperately need to survive, it's been taken by the city. Thank you.
Ms. Teresa, are there any callers on the line?
I don't see any raised hands, but I'll make an announcement. If anyone in the virtual meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine.
Commissioner Nash, I do believe that the folks next door have been able to make their way over. So if you have cards for them, we can go there. There are no raised hands in the virtual meeting.
Thank you. Then we will call up Alfred Torregano.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, commission. How are you all doing? My name is Alfred Torregano. I just wanted to make this public comment because I'm here in my personal capacity, although I'm a state commissioner on the professional fiduciary advisory committee. Want to make clear that this is in my personal capacity just to call out some of the issues that we're facing in cannabis as a retail operator. Our tax burdens as retailers is disproportionate and while we don't have federal protections, we do have constitutional protections under the state of California as well as the Los Angeles City Charter under uniformity clauses and equal protection and fair rights across businesses. I just want to make clear that as a retailer, I bear the highest tax out of all cannabis licenses. That's not disproportionate. It's not equitable. It's not fair and it's not uniform across the license types specifically. And in relations to other businesses, we're farly highly taxed, overtaxed compared to other retailers or compared to other, say alcohol or tobacco, if you will. And so I just wanted to call that out and we are being militarized, raids. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you check one more time to see if there's any callers in the queue?
If anyone in the virtual meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. Caller with phone number ending in two six four zero, please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Hello, this is Michael Weiss. I'd also like to make a quick comment on taxation, if possible.
You have one minute.
Um, as another retailer in the industry, I'd also like to agree that the taxation is a burden that is much higher than any other retail. And, uh, we accidentally were double billed for our application fee. And I had to panic because we can't afford the initial application fee for annual licensure. And then we, we were accidentally double billed for a second one, and I figured, oh my God, we're going to go out of business. So I just want to, um, also mention that it is a very high tax burden. Whether or not it's only five or ten percent in comparison to the rest of the taxation imposed upon us, uh, every bit of taxation takes away my ability to pay an employee or take a wage for the year. And that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other hands raised?
No, there is no other raised hands.
Thanks, everyone, for your comments. Both the general public comment, agenda item, and the single or multiple agenda item periods are now closed. Items number five through seven on the agenda were heard on September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. On October third, two thousand and twenty-four, the DCR requested that the Commission rescind the Commission's actions taken on September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, based on one or more technical errors in the presentation of DCR's recommendation that requires the matter to be re-noticed and reheard and agendized. And they've agendized these items to be reheard at the Cannabis Regulation Special Meeting scheduled for October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four. So we will now handle those items, beginning with item number five, DCR Core Record Number three one zero one seven one. The applicant is High Note Beat Incorporated to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at eight six two two South Belanca Avenue. Are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raise hand.
At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Kline, Assistant Executive Director, here to present item number five for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. Um, as previously stated by Vice President Nash, DCR Core Record Number three one zero one seven one is associated with High Note Beat Incorporated. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail storefront commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at eight six two two South Belanca Avenue, Los Angeles, California, nine zero zero four five. That is located in the Westchester Playa Del Rey Community Plan Area, um, which is also part of Council District eleven. This item was previously heard and approved by the Commission on September fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. Due to a clerical error, the department requested the Commission to rescind their decision so that the department could re-notice the applicant, uh, which we completed so that it could be back before you today. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for Class One and Class Thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to CEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it's appropriate to determine that this project is categorically exempt. The staff report, of course, lists the number of reasons why DCR could deny a license. None of those reasons are triggered today, nor were they triggered in the beginning of September. And therefore, DCR is recommending that the council or the Commission approve the issuance of a license to this applicant, and that concludes the department's presentation.
Are there any questions?
Uh, this is Commissioner Lim. It states here that there's no evidence of, of offer to meet with neighborhood council. Isn't that a separate requirement?
It, it is. The applicant did, in fact, offer to meet with the neighborhood council. The deficiency was the original, this app. The clerical error was resolved by the re-noticing, and at this time, there is not a reason to deny the issuance of the license to this applicant.
So, um, this is Commissioner Lim again. So the DCR received sufficient evidence of offer to meet with neighborhood council?
Yes, Commissioner.
So we would need to amend this report to reflect that. Is that correct?
Assistant Executive Director Jason Kline, um, to the extent that the report needs to be corrected, I would like to correct the table on the first page of the staff report to reflect that evidence of offer to meet with the neighborhood council was met, and that should be a yes, not a no.
Any other questions? Will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly into the microphone. You have ten minutes to address the Commission.
Good afternoon, Commission. Christopher Antigua, authorized representative for High Note Beat, Inc. Um, I was at the last hearing on, uh, September, and then we were notified on October third regarding DCR's rescission of that, uh, decision. I don't have any other further statement because at the last hearing, uh, the Commission did approve licensure for our business.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, uh, any deliberations? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Lim. In regards to agenda number five, DCR Core Record Number three one zero one seven one for the business located at eight six two two South Belanca Avenue. I make a motion to adopt the staff report with the amendment, with the oral amendment as reflected in today's hearing.
Commissioner Farmby, a second. Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lynn?
Aye.
Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much for coming again. Moving on to item number six, DCR Core Record Number one zero zero six three seven. The applicant is Strain Balboa Caregivers, Inc., to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at two one six one nine hyphen two one six two five West Devonshire Street. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raise hand.
At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon. Jason Kline, Assistant Executive Director, here to present item number six. DCR Core Record Number one zero zero six three seven is associated with Strain Balboa Caregivers, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail storefront commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at two one six one nine through two one six two five West Devonshire Street, Unit Number B, Chatsworth, California, nine one three three one, which is located in the Chatsworth Porter Ranch Community Plan Area and also within Council District Number twelve. This item was previously approved by the Commission on September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Due to a clerical error, the department requested the Commission to rescind their decision so that DCR could re-notice the applicant's public hearing to today, which was done. Based on the department's analysis, the project is consistent with the criteria for a Class One and Class Thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to CEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the Commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in the municipal code. Therefore, DCR is recommending that the Commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license, and that concludes the department's presentation.
The Commissioners have any questions for the department?
Um, this is Commissioner Lim. In regards to the, um, the community meeting that took place here, this was on August twenty-nine. Is there a time period within which a, um, the community meeting is valid for a certain time before another notice of another community meeting, uh, needs to be done?
So the department is required to conduct a community meeting within forty-five days of the application being deemed complete. So once we've met that requirement, there's not a future obligation to conduct, conduct another community meeting on top of that. Um, we do have the oral, um, oral testimony that comes in during the community meeting, as well as we have a portal set up where members of the public can start to provide written testimony as soon as they receive notice of the pending application. We post that notice also on the department's website so that folks that, you know, may not be located have the ability to see what applications are coming due, when the community meetings are, when the public hearings are. And then, of course, the, the last piece of information is if a member of the public wanted to submit, um, comments or testimony for consideration by this Commission, they, of course, always have the ability to reach out to our Commission team. The Commission team will, um, take that testimony and include it either in the regular correspondence that comes before this body or in the special correspondence that comes before this body, and then, of course, they can appear here to testify in person if they wanted to.
Thank you. All right, will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly into the microphone. You have ten minutes to address the
Breann Warden. I am the applicant for Strain Balboa Caregivers. Uh, we were also heard the last hearing. Uh, we've been part of this community for ten years. And, you know, I sit on the board of the chamber, I'm on the board of Chatsworth Kiwanis, and I'm also on Chatsworth Neighborhood Council, and that's it.
Commissioners have any question of the applicant?
Commissioner Farmby, uh, do you mind just sharing a little bit about your business with us?
Sure, we've been part of Chatsworth, uh, community, Strain Balboa Caregivers for ten years. Um, we're just a retail store.
You have, uh, can you explain the parking situation?
Our parking is all in front.
All in front?
Yeah.
And one last question. I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Farmby. Um, do you have any, like, any partnerships with folks in the community where you kind of, uh, have any, um, things for toys for tots or any holiday?
We work with pals through Devonshire Division, so we do that. And then we have, uh, typically a toy drive or keep boxes in the store, and then we do that through Chatsworth Kiwanis as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to deliberations. Any deliberations, Commissioners? Is there a motion?
Commissioner Farmby. Item number six, DCR Core Record Number one zero zero six three seven. Applicant Strain Balboa Caregivers Incorporated, located in the Chatsworth Porter Ranch area. The business premises is two one six one nine dash two one six two five West Devonshire Street. I move to make a motion to adopt the staff, uh, report, stated.
Commissioner Melendez, a second. Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Moving on to item number seven, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 four one. Applicant is Mission Hills Patients Collective, Inc., to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at six nine four four North Reseda Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raise hand.
At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Kline, Assistant Executive Director, here for item number seven. Uh, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 four one is associated with Mission Hills Patients Collective Incorporated. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail storefront commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one eight four four six Hart Street in Reseda, in the Reseda, West Van Nuys Community Plan Area, which is also located within Council District Number four. This item was previously approved by the Commission on September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Due to a clerical error, the department requested the Commission to rescind their decision and re-notice the applicant to be heard today. DCR completed the notice in requirements under the municipal code so we could hear this today. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the Class One, Class Thirty-two categorical exemptions pursuant to CEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff reports list the number of reasons DCR or the Commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons stated in the municipal code. Um, as I did at the September meeting, I would like to orally amend the staff report. On the front page of the staff report, it reflects that the applicant did not provide evidence to offer with the neighborhood council. The applicant did provide that evidence on September fourth of two thousand and twenty-four. So it was submitted before the last hearing, and that was one of the questions that the Commissioners raised. However, because, you know, we rescinded the department's recommendation and we represented the same report, that needs to be corrected on the record here as well. With that, the department is requesting that the Commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report, as amended orally today, and approve the issuance of this annual license, and that concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Are there any questions for the department?
So Commissioner Farmby, uh, Jason, can you confirm the business premises address, please?
The business premises address should be bear with me one second. Can we go back to, uh, to the original slide with the table? Um, bear with me, I'm just waiting for our licensing portal to reload. It's taking a little bit longer than normal for the website to reload. Is it possible for the Commission to table this item so we can come back to it, um, as soon as I get this information back up? Thank you.
This is Commissioner Melendez, just to be, just to be sure, uh, we actually approved this, this item a couple of months ago, correct, or am I incorrect? Was it just a technical issue on number seven? Was that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Commissioner Farmby, was there, um, a reason why you were questioning the address on the, uh, report? I heard a different one. Thank you. Point of clarification, if we continue this item and move to the next, do we need to do that by motion, or could we just do that? Point of clarification, if we continue this item and move to the next, do we need to do that by motion, or can we just do that?
Yeah. Yes, um, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Farmby, I mean, we can get the information during the course of the meeting, I think that.
Sounds like we can table the item. Okay. Move on to the next one.
Yeah.
And we can come back to open agenda items number.
Mr. Clean, still not up yet?
No, sir.
Okay, well then let's table item number seven and move on to item number nine, there is no item number eight. Item number nine is DCR Core Record number three one zero zero five six, the applicant is Revo Group LLC. To approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one zero one two five North Sepulveda Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
Uh, no, we do not have a speaker card nor a raise hand.
Okay, at this time, we will hear from the department.
Good afternoon, this is licensing analyst Roberta Oriana, I will present item number nine for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record number three one zero zero five six is associated with Revo Group LLC. The applicant seeks an annual license for type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one oh one two five North Sepulveda Boulevard in Mission Hills Panorama City North Hills Community Plan Area. Within Council District seven. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one oh four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license C ten dash zero 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 eight one nine dash LAC. To conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June second, twenty twenty-five. The applicant is subject to the requirements of LAMC section one zero four point two zero for the social equity program. To comply with equity share requirements, SEIAs must possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business. A proportional right to vote and to the profits and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, DCR reviewed the corporate and ownership documentation provided. For this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at this time. On or about September fourth, twenty twenty-four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants. Of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. A compliance inspection was recently conducted and a representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide an overview. Of the compliance activities associated with this location at the end of this licensing presentation. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty-two categorical exemption. Pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts. Or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes licensing's presentation for this item, Compliance and Enforcement will now provide their review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is Hector Ali Khan, Senior Management Analyst, Enforcement Division. And a compliance inspection was conducted on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at one oh one two five North Sepulveda Boulevard. During that compliance inspection, there were five items that were identified. The first item was a use of DBA. Revo Group, um, this DBA is to be registered with the county and DCR. Number two, regulation, a display of license, at present, they just need to email. They just need to provide a photo of the email on the sign, they do have the neighborhood liaison sign up on the business premises, they're just missing that one final little detail of providing the email. The security measures, surveillance recordings were not um identified as having ninety days at the time of the inspection. Since then, they have provided corrective action and confirmed that they did have ninety days, so that has been signed off as well. The fourth item was related to the business premises diagram. On the business premises diagram, the cameras were just identified in the wrong locations, so they just need to provide an updated business premises diagram. To the licensing team so they can correct and resolve that deficiency. And the last item was a business premises access, the door to the limited access area was identified as open. Um, just to be mindful that all limited access areas need to be secured and those doors need to be closed. Just that during the time of that inspection, it was open, since then they have provided and corrected that activity or that deficiency. So at present, they have two of the five items corrected and are current, currently working with the analyst.
This is Commissioner Melendez, how many days from when they get cited to when they're supposed to comply? Before it expires, before they run out of time?
Yes, this, this notice to correct was issued on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, so they have till October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So a few more days.
Few more days, yes.
And so out of the five, only.
Two.
Only two have been rectified.
Correct, so one, just, they just need to provide docs to DCR. For the DBA, provide an updated business premises diagram to the licensing team. And just to provide an updated um neighborlies on sign with an email. Thank you.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, in regards to the uh no physical changes without approval. It says a parking lot located in the rear of the business premise is not shown on the business premise diagram. Does that mean they have a parking lot in the back, but it wasn't shown in the diagram?
That's correct, just an adjacent parking lot, and all they gotta do is just, just identify it on an updated business premises diagram, as well as identifying the camera locations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant, please speak directly into the microphone, you have ten minutes to address the commission.
Hello, good afternoon, council, my name is Brenda Fajardo. I'm representing Revo Group LLC located on one oh one two five Sepulveda Boulevard, Mission Hills, California. Um, I did present a little small presentation. Uh, we are a recreational and medicinal storefront with a focus on healing and giving back to the community as much as possible. We have spearheaded events uh such as coat drives, food drives, Thanksgiving drives, and gave back to school items to low-income parents and college students, so we didn't just focus on one location. Um, we have our own private parking lot that comfortably fits eight cars with twenty-four hour security and a sliding gate to prevent on any unwanted visitors. As well as a private cleaner that comes twice a week to ensure our lot and the area anywhere like on the street is all clean and ready. Um, regarding the corrections, we did file uh email everything today, so everything has been sent over yesterday, and then today. There's a few little small corrections, but everything has been updated and everything is good now, it was just mostly like the diagram, we did add that little parking lot on the side. Um, and then as far as the locks, they're all good now.
Thank you, are there any questions for the applicant? This Vice President Nash, just, so just to be clear, uh, as of right now, you believe you've taken care of all of the deficiencies?
A thousand percent, yes, and then we are in contact with our. The person who we're speaking to, and we're constantly emailing everything, the person will be good, we'll just little minor stuff and it's all good now.
Thank you very much.
Listen, Commissioner Melendez, can you spell your name?
Yes, it's Brenda, B R E N D A, and then Fajardo, F A J A R D O.
Thank you, Ms. Fajardo.
Of course.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, when you submitted the corrective items for items one through five, was there a feedback or response from the inspector?
Uh, yes, it, it was just about the little parking lot and the cameras, we needed to number them, and we did that, and we forwarded over, and we're just waiting for a response.
So, uh, this Commissioner, so in regards to the cameras, you need to list the number, which camera goes to which site?
Yes.
And what was the second one?
Um, and then the parking lot?
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any deliberations?
Everything looks good.
This Vice President Nash, it appears as though the discrepancies were minor, and it also appears that um they've all been taken care of, so.
Yes. It's one of the confirmation from, I agree.
Is there a motion? This, this is Commissioner Melendez, for item number nine, a DCR Core Record number three one zero zero five six. For the business premises located at one zero one two five North Sepulveda Boulevard. I move to adopt staff recommendation as stated in their staff report dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
This Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Melendez.
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby.
Aye.
Commissioner Lim.
Aye.
Vice President Nash.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Colleen, um, are you ready to go back to number seven?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we are going to recall item number seven, DCR Core Record number one zero 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 four one. Applicant is Mission Hills Patients Collective, Inc. To approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at six nine four four North Reseda Boulevard. We had tabled this item to uh determine whether or not we had the correct address.
Yes, sir, and Jason Clean, Assistant Executive Director. Um, for item number seven, DCR Core Record number one zero 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 four one. That's associated with Mission Hills Patients Collective Incorporated. Um, the applicant is seeking an annual license for the type ten retail storefront commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at six nine four four North Reseda Boulevard. In the Reseda West Van Nuys Community Plan Area within Council District number four. Um, I did want to go back to review the agenda and review the staff report, and all of that is consistent and correct. And I do want to thank Commissioner Farmby for pointing out my verbal blunder the first time around, so I appreciate that. Um, the, seeing that the report and the agenda is correct, there's no need to amend anything other than my. Verbal testimony to make sure that it's clear that the address is six nine four four North Reseda Boulevard. And that concludes my presentation.
Since we've already heard uh the balance of the department's uh report, I will now call up the applicant. Please approach the podium, please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant, please speak directly into the microphone, you have ten minutes to address the commission.
Good afternoon, dear Commissioners, um, after Zatian, after I as representative for Mission Hills Patients Collective. I got letter for the technical error after the hearing, so I appear to cooperate with you and then correct that error. In uh, the error, I believe that uh, the six nine four four North Reseda Boulevard, it's a, for the address for uh. Retail storefront, one eight four four six, it's an address for cultivation. Manufacturing and distribution, so we need to know that I've corrected, that's the confusion.
Thank you for coming back. Any questions of the applicant, Commissioners?
No.
Any deliberations?
I think we've heard it before, so, I mean, we approved it, I believe the issue was a technical error, so it's uh, I'm okay with it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, in regards to number seven, DCR Core Record number one zero 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 four one. The business located at six nine four four North Reseda Boulevard, I make a motion to adopt staff report dated October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lim.
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby.
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez.
Aye.
Vice President Nash.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number ten, DCR Core Record number one one zero zero four zero. Applicant is H two L Ventures, Inc. To approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at five zero six seven West Washington Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raise hand.
Thank you, at this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon, this is licensing analyst Roberta Oriana, I will present item number ten for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record number one one zero zero four zero is associated with H two L Ventures, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at five zero six seven West Washington Boulevard in the West Adams. Baldwin Hills Lamarth Community Plan Area within Council District ten. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional licenses C ten dash zero 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 one zero five seven dash LAC. To conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June seventh, twenty twenty-five. Please note the DBA listed on the state's webs, on the state's site. Bud's Deli does not match the DBA Royal Greens registered with DCR. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC section one zero four point two zero for the social equity program. On or about September fourth, twenty twenty-four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants. Of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. A compliance inspection was recently conducted and a representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division. Is in attendance and available to provide an overview of the compliance activities associated with this location at the end of this licensing presentation. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny the annual license for the reasons in LAMC section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes licensing's presentation for this item, Compliance and Enforcement will now provide their review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Hector Ali Khan, Senior Management Analyst, Supervisor for the Enforcement Division. A compliance inspection was complete, was conducted. On August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at location five zero six seven West Washington Boulevard. As a result, an NTC notice to correct was issued August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. With the deadline of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, during the inspection, there were ten deficiencies identified. At present, all ten deficiencies have been corrected and sufficient evidence was provided. To go down the list of all ten deficiencies, they were display of temporary approval. Employee badges, graffiti at the front gate, code of conduct being posted on the interior of the premises. The ninety days required recording for the video surveillance equipment. Having the LAPD alarm permit onsite, exterior. exterior, having the signage of no can, no cannabis consumption on the exterior, metric reporting, a dedicated GPS device for the delivery vehicles, and also the delivery vehicle placard forms. All ten of those have been corrected and this inspection has been passed.
Commissioner Farmby, how you doing Hector? Uh, can you, what is the metric reporting? What's that?
So the metric reporting is on their daily sales. They need to update metric with the point of sales. And during the time of the inspection, the numbers were off. It just, it just means at the end of the day, they just needed to correct and update their sales and then provide us a report and they did provide that to the analyst.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Vice President Nash. The department report indicates that there were two complaints in May of two thousand twenty. Did the department investigate those complaints?
Yes, and dur- during the, the compliance inspection, um, they did not observe or observe or smell any odor, nor identify any loitering at the properties. Since then, there hasn't been any, um, any further complaints regarding that issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Will the, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly into the microphone. You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Thomas Park. I'm the representative for H two L Ventures in Mid-City LA. Uh, we've been in business for about seven years. Um, my background is actually on the delivery side of the business. Um, at one point, we had almost two hundred people from our, you know, from our community being employed, uh, at that location. Um, for us, uh, compliance is a big thing and being able to offer safe access of quality product, uh, safe product, uh, to our community is a big thing. In terms of giving back to the community, I mean, giving jobs, I think is probably one of the biggest things that we can do is giving people jobs in that area. Um, we do run, you know, annual food drives as well as toy drives. Beyond that, uh, no, I just wanted to get your support and approval for the license.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Commissioner Farmby, how you doing?
Good.
Good. How many employees you currently have?
Currently, we have about ten. Oh, yeah, so because of the downturn, just delivery didn't make any sense, so we had to basically shut that business down. Probably in the last six months, we had to shave down probably another seventy percent of our staff, so we are running very close to dry, bare bones. Um, so we're holding on to dear life just to hopefully get past this, uh, down, you know, downtrend in the business and hopefully, you know, it'll get better next year. Uh, we are just really holding on, just trying to keep up with paying our taxes and keeping up with, uh, with everything else.
Yeah, thank you for that. And how, uh, how, how large is your facility?
Our facility is seventy-two hundred square feet, uh, in total. The retail is about twenty-two hundred square feet. The rest of it is distribution, manufacturing, as well as a small cultivation.
Oh, okay, you got the full gamut. And your parking, you have, uh?
Uh, we do have parking, uh, employee parking in the back. It's around, uh, eight spots. Um, parking in the front is pretty open, uh, for, to say the least.
Any issues in that part of the?
Uh, not necessarily. There is a little bit of, there's a little bit of crime. Um, you know, the Mid-City area, it's where it's pretty much around like La Brea and Washington. You know, back in the days, it's very seedy hotel kind of, uh, area. It has gotten a lot better, um, in the last five years. Uh, homelessness is always a problem. Mental health, uh, you know, homelessness is a, is a big issue. Um, but we do, you know, clean up our, our front of our store quite a bit. Um, we are neighbored next to a Dollar Tree, so that kind of attracts that type of crowd a little bit too. Um, where the transits kind of come and try to get, you know, cheap things for themselves and dump a lot of trash in front of our yard. Um, so it is a little bit of a challenge, but it is getting better.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, when you had a peak of two hundred employees, what was the breakdown between delivery?
Uh, it was probably about one seventy-five, maybe one fifty delivery and about fifty on the, uh, on the retail as well as the cultivation and manufacturing side.
And when did the delivery start slowing down?
Oh, I mean, I think the large part of it kind of slowed down about maybe, uh, at the end of the pandemic, closer to the end of the pandemic. Obviously, during the pandemic, things were great. Everything was, you know, doing really well. But I think as, uh, you know, funds started, you know, getting spent out, uh, business got a lot more difficult and then for us, you know, we're in California, we, you know, the minimum wage is really high, cost of delivery to drop off an order that's worth fifty dollars. Now our margins are, you know, twenty percent after taxes. Um, it just doesn't make sense to make that delivery anymore. So, you know, we started bleeding money in fact, and it's like cash flow is great, but if we're losing money on a month-to-month basis, doesn't seem, uh, a good practice to keep that business open, so we had to shut it down. We're hoping that we can open it up again at some point, but in this current environment, uh, it's, it's not there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deliberations?
I don't, I know it's.
All right, is there a motion?
This, uh, Commissioner Farmby, item number eleven, DCR Core Record.
Item number ten.
Number ten.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry about that. Uh, item number ten, uh, DCR Core Record one, one, zero, zero, four, zero. Uh, applicant H two L Ventures Incorporated, uh, business premises at fifty, sixty-seven West Washington Boulevard. I make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation as stated.
Commissioner Melendez, a second. Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Councilors. Thank you.
Item number eleven, DCR Core Record Number one, zero, one, seven, five, one. Applicant is the Higher Path Patients Association to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one, four, zero, eight, zero, West Ventura Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, there is no speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon. This is Licensing Analyst Roberta Oriana, and I will present item number eleven for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one, zero, one, seven, five, one is associated with the Higher Path Patients Association. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one, four, zero, eight, zero, West Ventura Boulevard in the Sherman Oaks Studio City, Toluca Lake, Gawanga Pass Community Plan Area within Council District Four. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of October twentieth, twenty twenty. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one, zero, four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license C ten dash zero, 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 one, five, seven dash LAC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June ninth, twenty twenty five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one, zero, four point two zero for the social equity program. On or about September fourth, twenty twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. One oral comment was provided in favor of the application. A compliance inspection was recently conducted and a representative for the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide an overview of the compliance activities associated with this location at the end of this licensing presentation. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for Class One and Class Thirty Two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one, zero, four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the licensing's presentation for this item. Compliance and enforcement will now provide their review.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Hector Ali Khan, Senior Management Analyst, Enforcement Division. A compliance inspection was conducted on May sixteen, twenty twenty four at location one, four, zero, eight, zero, West Ventura Boulevard. A Notice to Correct was issued on August twenty third, twenty twenty four. And the three items that, the deficiencies that were identified were simply as identification of employees. The badges were missing the record core number. The surveillance system recording and storage, there was an inability to confirm that they had ninety days' storage on their surveillance equipment. And product transport, um, they needed to provide evidence that they had a dedicated global positioning service or device in a fixed or temporarily affixed or permanently affixed in the vehicle. At present, our compliance analyst is reviewing their documentation or their evidence for sufficient compliance. I did reach out to the owner, Jared Kilo. I made contact with him and his statements were that he has sufficient, he feels as though he has sufficiently provided evidence to meet these three requirements. However, currently, our analyst Fred Ely is reviewing that documentation and that's a middle.
So this is Commissioner Melendez, so, uh, these three items right now are currently under review?
Correct.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, do you know when the Notice to Correct was issued to the applicant?
August twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Which means that, okay.
When, uh, this is Vice President Nash, when would the applicant be considered late in addressing those items?
Well, the deadline was September twenty third, twenty twenty four. However, he has submitted his evidence. Our compliance analyst hasn't confirmed whether or not, yeah, so normally if they're insufficient, we would reach out, ask for some, some confirming evidence or additional photos. At present, our analyst is currently reviewing that evidence.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, do you know if it was submitted, uh, by September twenty third, two thousand twenty four?
At present, I don't, I don't have that answer for you.
Any other questions of the department?
Thank you.
I don't have a speaker card. Are there any, um, is the applicant in the queue?
We do have a raised hand in the virtual meeting. I will call on them. Caller with phone number ending in zero, zero, four, eight, please state your name and whether you represent the applicant. You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Hi, this is Lisa Sealan. Sorry about that little technical difficulty here. How are you guys today? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good, hi. Anyways, this is Lisa Sealan and thank you all again for doing this. I know it's a long time coming each time you get here, but I do appreciate how quickly you're going through this today. Um, I do represent the Higher Path. I have been their compliance attorney since two thousand and thirteen and they are one of the original MMDs. They were formed in March of two thousand and seven and they've been at their current location in Sherman Oaks since two thousand and thirteen and they have been very, um, open and into educating customers, medicinal customers, adult customers, and they are about cannabis and the benefits of cannabis for multiple types of ailments or just multiple types of ways to make you feel better as a human. Um, with regard to the compliance inspection, everything was provided timely. We actually monitor all of the items that get provided and they were done in a timely fashion and it's just a matter of the Department of Cannabis Regulation reviewing them and approving them, but they have all been, they've all been provided. And we do this with every one of our clients, so we make sure that everybody's in compliance with an, with an inspection. But, um, other than that, they are in full compliance with all of the rules and regulations. Their, um, CEO, Jared Kilo, actually is very um, involved in the cannabis, um, industry. He is the president of UCBA, which is a retail cannabis Business Association, which was formed in two thousand and fifteen. And he is always working on all the lobbying and he was very instrumental in getting the, um, legislation passed that go prevent the City of Los Angeles Office of Finance taxing the excise taxes with their gross receipts taxes, which will save all of the retailers approximately one point five to two percent of their gross receipts taxes. Because even though it is a ten percent gross receipts tax for adult use and a five percent gross receipt tax for medicinal, when you're taxing additional fifteen percent, it actually amounts to about eleven and a half to twelve percent, depending on how the um, Office of Finance calculates it. So it will definitely save a lot of money for the industry and that's beneficial. But other than that, I just really think they're a fabulous operation. Um, they do everything correctly. They're very community-based. And if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions, commissioners?
Yes.
So, Lisa, this is Commissioner Melendez. So I'm looking here and it says that the product, uh, licensee for the, uh, global positioning system was, uh, not, uh, up to specs, so, uh, can you elaborate on what you guys have done to, uh, resolve that?
Well, a lot of times, are you talking about the, when you say what was not up to specs? Can you tell me exactly what you're talking?
Yeah, the regulation for the product transportation, for the licenses, use of the business iPhone, iPad as the global positioning system for designated delivery vehicle.
Absolutely. So basically what happens is all of our cars have a GPS system built into them, especially the newer cars. But the, um, Department of Cannabis, um, Control in Sacramento in their rules and regs, and then the City of Los Angeles has adopted them, requires everybody to have a independent GPS system. So they actually, um, found a provider of that and each one of their delivery vehicles now has an independent GPS system and it is not part of the phone that they're in or the car that they're in. It's actually an independent GPS system that each vehicle now has.
Thank you.
They run about sixty-seven bucks a piece, I think. And we've, you know, we're starting to find vendors, so when one of our clients says, oh, we don't have them, we say, oh, our other client used this vendor and so everybody seems to be going to the same places, so it's, you know, easier to find all these things now that multiple businesses have the same issues.
Any other questions, commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We are on deliberations. Any deliberations?
I don't have any. It just seems like the only notice is to complyer with the deliveries, which was basically, so I'm good.
All right, is there a motion?
This Commissioner Lim, in regards to Agenda Number Eleven, DCR Core Record Number one, zero, one, seven, five, one, for the business located at one, four, zero, eight, zero, West Ventura Boulevard, I make a motion to adopt the staff report dated October twenty one, two thousand twenty four.
Commissioner Melendez, a second. Ms. Teresa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Moving on to item number twelve, DCR Core Record Number one, zero, 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 seven, one. Applicant is Southern California Collective, a California corporation, to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at two, four, three, five, South Military Avenue. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item? Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you, at this time we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon, this is licensing analyst Roberto Oriana, I will present item number twelve for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number One Zero 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 Seven One is associated with Southern California Collective, a California corporation, DBA Coastal. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at two four three five South Military Avenue in the West Los Angeles Community Plan area within Council District Five. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of March nineteenth, twenty twenty nineteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C ten dash zero 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 one four three dash LIC to conduct retail onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June sixth, twenty twenty five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one zero four point two zero for the social equity program. The applicant is an existing medical marijuana dispensary pursuant to LAMC Section one zero five point zero three B and E M M D shall not be subject to the zone distance and sensitive use restrictions stated in LAMC Section one zero five point zero two until after December thirty first, twenty twenty five. On the condition that the E M M D operates and continues to operate in compliance with the distance and sensitive use restrictions. On or about September fourth, twenty twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. During that meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. The oral and written testimonies against the application overwhelmingly cite the strong odor of cannabis emitting, emitted from the address, which has been identified as a result of cannabis cultivation license on the adjacent property, which is owned and operated by a separate entity. The comments in support of the license applauded the aesthetics and clamminess of the store and stated they were good community members. A compliance inspection was recently conducted and a representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide an overview of the compliance activities associated with this location at the end of this licensing presentation. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes licensing's presentation for this item. Compliance and enforcement will now provide their review.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Hector Ali Khan, Supervisor for Enforcement Division. There was a compliance inspection at location twenty four thirty five South Military Avenue on August fourteenth, twenty twenty four. A notice to correct was issued October twenty second, twenty twenty four with a deadline of November twenty second, twenty twenty four. As a result, the operator sent an email on October twenty second, twenty twenty four to um, address the nine items and deficiencies that were identified during the compliance inspection. The first item was display of license, neighborhood liaison, contact information is not prominently displayed where it can be viewed by the public, state and local agencies. The operator provided a photo of that neighborhood liaison at the property in the correct, in the front and rear of the property, I'm sorry, at the front facing of the property. Second item was identification of employees. The operator did provide a photo of the badge with the core, DCR core number identified on this batch. The third item is the code of conduct being identified on the premises and they did provide a copy of the document, the code of conduct, and a photo of the code of conduct being um, posted in a conspicuous place within the interior of the premises. The fourth item was no physical changes without approval. Um, the compliance suspect inspector identified an issue with the business premises diagram. They did provide a narrative for this discrepancy. Um, in review of their narrative and the business premises diagram, I did identify that that was sufficient evidence for the issue. What they did was they had a text box on the business premises stating that this is bathroom room one oh six. The text box actually looked like a room, but it was just a text box identifying the room, which is a requirement for business premises diagram, so that that item will be removed off the NTC. The sixth item is security measures, video surveillance recordings, not having the ability to show facial features of both the seller and the, the patron. They did provide photos of the, of the photos of the purchaser and the seller at the site, so those were sufficient evidence. Another item was not being able to identify or show video recordings of limited access rooms one oh four and one oh five. They did provide photos of both rooms, number one oh four and one oh five in this email. The eighth item was ventilation exhaust systems, that is in relation to the complaint that was provided and in discussions with the operator and looking at the DCR record, there is a separate entity or license with cultivation activity on that location and there is a complaint that is currently under investigation. The last item, number nine, is record retention, personnel records of employees are not produced during the inspection. They did provide a doc that is provided. I did review all this, all the evidence myself and the compliance analysts will go through and provide a response to the operator. Any questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Melendez, Hector. So is there a license for cultivation at that exact same address?
Yes, at the exact same ad- address.
Is it subdivided, uh, how do we know uh, where one uh, business is and the other businesses, if it's the same address?
So that there's, there's specific uh, requirements in regards to separate licenses. There has to be common, common access ways leading to both entities. And the business premises diagram reflects that as well, so if there's an adjacent property or anything that's not reflective or not part of that business premises diagram, it's um, it's identified with hash marks stating this is not part of our license.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, in regards to the August twenty nine, two thousand and twenty four virtual community meeting, uh, were all eighteen negative comments um, dealing with the um, smell of the uh, cannabis?
Um, unfortunately, I was, wasn't in attendance of this community meeting, but there is a complaint in the complaint portal and our special investigators are have it currently under investigation and will conduct a full investigation of the odor smell at this location.
And, and do we confirm that the cultivation is a separate entity, not in any way affiliated with the applicant?
Yes, it is a separate entity and no associated owners.
And in terms of uh, the cannabis odor that was detected, that's po- possibly from the cultivation and not from the applicant's retail store?
So our compliance inspectors, when they go out there, they, they take a look at inventory, they take a look at the, the product, they do a metric test, they go through the entire premises. Um, there wasn't no, no cannabis or open, let's say flower or cultivation or anything of that nature within that retail space.
Thank you.
This is Vice President Nash, um, can you just reconfirm for me, the only complaint has been related to the odor, is that correct?
That is correct.
And of the nine discrepancies listed in the report, how many have been taken care of already?
So based on the evidence they provided, I believe on Tuesday, all, all deficiencies, evidence, sufficient evidence has been provided, all except number four, which I am going to remove off the notice to correct to provide an updated business premises diagram because the, the business premise diagram is sufficient.
So all the discrepancies have been taken uh, care of?
Based on my review, yes, it has.
And can you tell us what the requirements are or expectation is in terms of odor coming from a cultivation site?
So for any, any cannabis location or premises, we are not to have any cannabis odor when any of our inspectors or compliance or, or patron or constituent walk up to the property, there should not be any smells or odor.
Has the department done an inspection of the cultivation site at this location?
At present, no, there has not been a compliance inspection, however, there will be an enforcement inspection conducted in the near, in the near future.
Thank you. Any further questions Commissioners? Uh, yes, Mr. Colleen?
Um, to address Commissioner Lim's question, um, seven of the complaints were related to odor that were submitted as part of the community meeting process.
This Commissioner Lim, what was the other uh, complaints in the neighborhood?
Um, just the proximity to um, this specific location and homeowners, the Westwood Homeowners Association is against um, the issuance of the license um, because of its proximity to um, residential units. Um, they, they don't like, they're a small local neighborhood, they don't like to um, have these types of businesses because they believe it um, brings in vagrants and draws attention from others not supposed to be in the neighborhood. So those are the general comments.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have two speaker cards for the applicant, will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly into the microphone, you have ten minutes to address the commission.
Hey, so my name is Krista Adams, I am the Regional Director overseeing this location. Um, I've been a member of uh, Gold Flora, originally the parent company and now Gold Flora and joined the company back in twenty twenty two, in which I was the uh, Training Manager for the company and have taken on this role since then. Um, I help oversee daily operations, uh, customer and product education um, and staff training and development at this location. Um, we've been a part of this community, um, that storefront has been a part of the community since twenty twenty one. Uh, but the parent company took ownership of it in twenty twenty two. Um, and that's when I, you know, had started working with, with the store and the staff directly. Uh, we provide safe, legal cannabis goods to consumers in the area, uh, providing product knowledge and education to our customers coming in and visiting. We also hire locally within the community, um, providing uh, a competitive benefits package for our employees as well as competitive wages. Um, and our main education is just to provide trust within the community in, in being able to secure safe cannabis goods.
Thank you, any questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Melendez, uh, the uh, the entrance, is that located uh, facing the street?
For the retail location, it is in the back of the building, facing the back parking lot.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Farmby, um, are your staff a part of Local Seven Seventy?
I'm not, I don't believe so, no.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, um, are you, uh, how close are you to this cultivation facility that's uh, uh, next to or part of, in the same building as your store?
So we share the same building, but we are completely separate entities. Um, as um, our auditor mentioned, separate entrances, we don't interact with the employees at the cultivation site besides giving them mail when that gets dropped off on our side, um, completely separate.
And then in regards to the uh, portal complaint about you being close to residents, how, what's the distance between uh, your facility and the um, closest neighbor?
Yeah, so the cultivation side, which is closest to the main street, is directly across the street from the neighborhood.
Okay, no, but residents, in terms of uh, uh, residential area, how far are you from residential houses?
Um, we, like I said, we're right across the street, I couldn't measure in, oh, yeah.
Military is a pretty big street.
It, it is, nice wide street, but yes.
Got it, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? I have another speaker card for uh, Ryan Pratt?
He's backup.
So you don't want to, uh, okay, thank you. All right, no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to deliberations.
Commissioner Nash, I do believe that um, Assistant Executive Director Colleen has some points to add.
Um, I just wanted to add for the record because it didn't come up. The local neighborhood council did submit a community impact statement in support of this operator. And then to address Commissioner Lim's question, um, it's about sixty seven feet from the closest exterior wall of the building to the closest parcel um, zone for a residential use.
Yeah, this Commissioner Melendez, yes, it looks like it's pretty the narrow part of the street, it's not like a really big street, but there's plenty of parking there. And the, I believe the operator stated that there, that they actually uh, entrances in the back of the building, which which is uh, wouldn't really cause too much of an issue with the uh, with the residents because it'd be coming in through the back. So there's, it wouldn't be any loitering or any real heavy noise.
And this Commissioner Lim, uh, Jason, I, I would think for cultivation, it's stricter sensitive area than it is for retail, is that correct?
Um, no sir, that is not correct. Um, our cultivation businesses only have to be located outside of six hundred feet from a school and that's the only sensitive use that they have to be distanced from. Um, cultivators can be adjacent to a residential use if they wanted to be. Um, as part of the permitting process, DBS and fire can require them to have certain odor control modules like filters like they use for a pomeran complexes that are located adjacent to a freeway to filter out either potential contaminants coming into the building or leaving the building. Um, but that's outside of DCR's expertise. If we did um, find odor there, it would be something where it would be referred probably to building and safety to make sure that they have the appropriate level of ventilation to prevent odors from escaping from the location.
Thank you. Any other deliberations? Is there a motion?
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, in regards to number twelve, DCR Core Record Number One Zero 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 Seven One, for a business located two four three five South Military Avenue. I make a motion that we adopt the staff report dated October twenty one, two thousand twenty four.
Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Ms. Teresa, will you please call, excuse me, call the roll?
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item number thirteen, DCR Core Record Number One Zero 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 Six Seven. Applicant is Resource Referral Services Inc. to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one zero eight four two West Magnolia Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you, at this time we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon, this is licensing analyst Roberto Oriana, I will present item number thirteen for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number One Zero 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 Six Seven is associated with Resource Referral Services Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one zero eight four two West Magnolia Boulevard in North Hollywood Valley Village Community Plan area within Council District Two. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of January first, twenty eighteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC 104.06. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C10-0000130-LAC, to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June 4, 2025. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section 104.20 for the social equity program. On or about September 4th, 2024, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within 700 feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September 26, 2024. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. And DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. A compliance inspection was recently conducted and a representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide an overview of the compliance activities associated with this location at the end of this licensing presentation. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for Class 1 and Class 32 categorical exemption pursuant to CECL guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section 104.04. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes licensing's presentation for this item. Compliance and enforcement will now provide their review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Hector Ali Khan, Senior Management Analyst, Enforcement Division. A compliance inspection was conducted on August 21, 2024 at location 10842 West Magnolia Boulevard. A notice correct was issued on September 30, 2024 with a deadline of October 30, 2024. During the compliance inspection, there were 10 items that were identified as deficient. First item is the use of a DBA. The use of Project Cannabis was not identified as updated on the DCR record. Since then, they have submitted a modification request to the record on October 22, 2024, which is currently under review by the DCR licensing analyst. Second item is the display of license, which the compliance inspector identified that the neighborhood liaison contact information did not match the confirmation, the contact information on the DCR licensing record. Since then, they have submitted License Form 4001, which is requesting to add that information to that record. And the DCR licensing analyst is currently reviewing that documentation. The third item is identification of employees. The badges were identified as missing the DCR Core Record Number. The the operator needs to provide us a photo of the ID to meet compliance. The fourth item was the posting of the Code of Conduct. Since then, the compliance analyst has confirmed corrective action has been taken and signed that deficiency off. The fifth item was no physical changes without approval. A business premises diagram mod has been submitted to DCR licensing on October 22, 2024, which is to identify the the camera locations and the removal of one door to a room. The sixth item is security measures. The surveillance recordings were not identified to have the required 90 days, nor did they identify a securing of the DVR equipment. Since then, they have provided sufficient evidence to confirm that they have 90 days video surveillance. However, they still need to provide documentation or a photo of the DVR equipment being secured either in a limited access room or in a secured DVR lockbox. The seventh item is there is no written log that tracks non-employee access to the limited access area. Since then, the operator has provided sufficient evidence and that has been corrected. The eighth item is loitering. There is no, there are no signs identified on the property for no loitering, public drinking, or public smoking, consumption of cannabis. Sign was not posted on the inside of the business premises. They need to provide documentation and show evidence of that of that posting at the property. The 10th item is business premises access. There was a limited access room or door that was left open. They just need to provide evidence that that door has been closed, which is which is a simple fix. They do have a deadline of October 30 to provide all evidence. Any questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Melendez, Hector. So up to date, how many of these notice to corrects have been dealt with?
They have 10 items. Three items have been signed off.
This Commissioner Lem, in regards to violation number five, are you saying that they removed the door that's held between the reception area where you show your ID and get checked in and the retail area where you purchase the cannabis?
Yeah, so it's it's a room, let's say, let's say, for example, the retail space is directly to the left of us. There's a room leading to that area on the business premises diagram. They had two doors leading to that room. At present, the current site conditions only has one door. So they just need to identify that that door is a wall rather than an access door.
Oh, I see. It's this Commissioner Lem, so it's not a, there is no access between the reception and the retail?
No, it's, yeah, it's a limited access room. So limited access rooms have to have a solid core door, commercial grade lock to prevent anybody.
Understood. It seemed like reading this, it seemed like they removed the door. So there was no barrier between the reception and the limited area.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any additional questions?
This is Vice President Nash. When did the department send out the notice to correct?
September 30, 2024.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anybody on the
Thank you.
virtual queue?
Yes, we have a raised hand. Caller with phone number ending in 2922, please state your name and whether you represent the applicant. You have 10 minutes to address the commission. Caller with phone number ending in 2922, please state your name and whether you represent the applicant. They may be having difficulty unmuting themselves. To unmute yourself, please dial star six. Not certain what's going on because on our end, they show to be unmuted.
Oh, hello, I'm sorry, can the department hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name.
Yes, my name's Corey Cox. I'm appearing today as an authorized representative on behalf of the applicant Resource Referral Services.
Okay, you have 10 minutes.
First, apologize for the delay. I was unmuted myself in the Zoom chat, but not on my phone. So technical difficulties on my end. Thank you to the commission for their time today and for the opportunity to present and for also accommodating me via telephone. I'd like to start by presenting some background on the business, its community engagement and its ownership. And then we'd like to address the compliance inspection and talk through outstanding corrective actions. Again, the applicant business is located at 10482 Magnolia Boulevard in North Hollywood. And the business has been operating at this location in the same building since 2011. And the building is located in a general commercial retail area. We are a retail establishment and sell only prepackaged and sealed inventory. And we average about 250 customer visits a day. We have a dedicated and gated parking lot onsite. That includes approximately 30 spaces for use by customer and staff. In terms of staff, there's approximately four to five on a rolling basis throughout the day, leaving 25 spaces for customers at any one time. The applicant business is owned by the Cannabis Company, which is a publicly traded company with licensed regulated cannabis operations across 13 states. So the the ownership group is very experienced and a well-resourced operator with the resources and a commitment to operating legally and compliantly. And as a public company, the ownership group is subject to SEC reporting requirements. Third-party auditors were required to provide updates on operations and compliant activity. And that's a fairly unique thing about the business that is important to highlight for this group. Also, given the ownership structure, there is experienced security and of legal compliance teams, HR resource teams that are able to support the applicant business onsite. In terms of community engagement, the applicant and its ownership group seek to foster a role in improving the community. And so we've organized and executed multiple street cleanups in the immediate surrounding area. And that's all done with staff on payroll hours, with staff who have volunteered or agreed to participate in those activities. Then the business also participates with organizations like Weed for Warriors, who organizes various efforts and support of veterans. And finally, the the business, business representatives met with the NoHo Neighborhood Council Planning and Land Use Committee very recently on October 16, 2024. It was a very productive and and I think engaging meeting. And the Planning and Land Use Committee recommended that the full neighborhood council prepare a letter of support at the neighborhood committee's next meeting, which would be with the full board. And so that is set to occur in November. And the licensee, or excuse me, the applicant is planning to attend that meeting. And recognizing that'll still be after this hearing, the applicant believes it's important to engage with the neighborhood council, continue to build that relationship and and ensure representatives are available and that there's kind of established communication with the neighborhood council. And finally, with respect to the DCR compliance check performed August 21, I want to want to stress the applicant business takes compliance, its compliance obligations very seriously. And the inspection report was in in many ways kind of an eye-opening opportunity for business and and its leadership. It provides a pretty critical opportunity for internal review and improvement. And so following the inspection and then upon receipt of the written reports, the light, the applicant business has pursued corrective actions. And as of, and have closed the business yesterday, the applicant has provided to the compliance analyst a written response that provides pictures or a description of corrective actions for all 10 of the identified issues. We'll say the applicant received earlier today from the compliance analyst a request for follow-up pictures, including the enclosed DVR and a copy of the badge that were referenced earlier in the presentation. I can confirm those items are completed and that pictures will be provided to DCR representatives no later than the close of business today. Think the applicant raw agrees with DCR's determination that the inspection report, it is a compliance inspection, did not reveal con serious, excuse me, did not reveal serious concerns that impacted DCR's recommendation for licensure. And the applicant is is grateful for DCR's recommendation. However, the applicant acknowledges that the inspection identified areas for improvement and is working to implement a range of process improvements to promote compliance and prevent issues on a go-forward basis. Well, well, and to stop there to answer any questions regarding the business.
This is Commissioner Farmby, how you doing? The location is a pretty, pretty busy street. And there's parking, parking like area in the back. Is that dedicated for you all, for the customers?
Yes, that's dedicated for staff and customers off the street, fully enclosed lot. Again, there's about 30 spaces. And today, parking has not been an issue. Those those spaces have been sufficient to satisfy staff and and customer demand.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Farmby again. That area is kind of, has a transient population over over in that, on that side. Have you all encountered that at all?
I think there's, it's been whole kind of passing by the store. The store does have a dedicated video remote monitoring service that through exterior cameras is able to identify potential disturbances you all said to business and and ensure there are eyes on and availability for kind of remote remote reporting. There's also a security staff available. And so I think that's something the business has has observed, but it hasn't been, hasn't posed a problem or or major disruption to business operations.
Okay, thank you.
Or to customers.
This is Commissioner Melendez, I have a question for you. You said that this is part of a group that's publicly traded. What is the name of that group?
It's the Cannabis Company.
And as the applicant Resource Referral Service, Inc., who is the actual representative of Resource Referral Service, Inc., the actual physical person? Is that, would that be you, Corey?
Yeah, so I'm I'm not a owner. I'm just an authorized representative today. The actual, kind of natural persons that are officers, directors of Resource Referral, Inc., the applicant business, are also basically executive officers for the publicly traded company. And so I feel like that best creates kind of commonality and accountability throughout the corporate org chart.
I guess my question is, who would we contact if we needed to contact someone for the Resource Referral Service Company, Inc.?
Yes, and so do through have the the DCR portal a range of contact information? Company has legal counsel in the city of LA that is listed in the portal. The portal also includes contact information for for natural persons that are the officers and directors of Resource Referral, Inc. And can be, you know, responsive to any requests or inquiries DCR or the commission may have.
Yes, Mr. Colleen has a question.
Thank you, Vice President Nash. Commissioner Melendez, the Resource Referral Services has a neighborhood liaison of Chad Dodson. And we do have multiple contacts on the record tied directly to that entity that DCR would reach out to if they had a question or concern. And then, of course, Chad Dodson would be the listed neighborhood liaison for the entity at the location.
That answers my question. Thank you so much, Tracy.
If I could add as well, Chad Dodson is one of the, pursuant to the compliance inspection, DCR noted earlier, the the applicant business is in process of changing Chad's DCR noted earlier, the applicant business is in process of changing Chad Dodson to another individual. But that other individual, the neighborhood liaison, is the GM of the store, physically present onsite. And then again, there's other individuals listed in the portal that can be contacted on behalf of the business.
This is Vice President Nash. Regarding the discrepancy concerning the recordings not being kept for 90 days, can you tell me, you know, what happened out there and what you did to correct it?
Yes, absolutely. So this is an issue where the settings on the camera were changed via a kind of software update that was pushed system. And so the software update improved the resolution of the video, which diminished kind of storage capacity. And so that, that shifted capacity from 90 to 87 days. That was identified during the inspection, immediately corrected, I think, same day. The original kind of resolution settings were restored. And, and as of this meeting today, the licensee, excuse me, the applicant maintains 93 days of video surveillance footage.
Thank you. This is Vice President Nash again. Regarding the employee records not being provided, can you tell me what happened in that instance?
Yes, absolutely. So I think the employee records, including, I think, name, start gate, and importantly, social security numbers, are maintained through a variety of electronic platforms. And talking with the onsite managers available during the inspection, it sounds like there was some confusion on what was being asked for. And they weren't able to provide that information during the visit. I think the bottom line here is that the business does maintain this information. It is stored in electronic, protect the social security numbers in particular, that's subject to access controls. But the management of the store has reviewed how to access that information in advance of a, of a future inspection. And we have compiled that information to make available in digital format to DCR. So ultimately, we believe this is a situation where the records were available. But onsite management was not aware of how to best make that available during an inspection. That's a teachable moment for the applicant business. And we've worked with our, our management to prevent that situation from arising in the future.
Thank you very much for those detailed responses. They found them very helpful. I would just make one suggestion in the future. If you ever have an inspection again, try to attend to these items a little quicker than you did in, in this case. And it sounds like you will.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any deliberations?
Yeah, this Commissioner Melendez, yeah, you know, it's just kind of finding your way through who's doing what, you know, like they've said, they had said issues, you know, there with the management there is not having this. And it's the big corporate entity that's kind of managing that or ownership that's involved in this kind of, not the biggest fan of not having like faces there, you know, names that, you know, that are involved in the actual day-to-day running, you know, for just the neighborhood, you know, for the just, you know, just for accountability. It doesn't seem like they really have a, whether going through people. I don't know, just this, I don't know, this doesn't seem solid to me.
This Commissioner, they've been in operation since 2011. Seems like they're doing very high volume and no complaints in the portal. You know, no real other issues. The violations that are here are fairly minor violations. And it seems like this, this is probably the first inspection that they had. It was a wake-up call. And I guess to fix it, you got to go through all the corporate hoopla. And that's why it took them a long time to fix it. Whereas if it was a smaller operation, they could fix it right away. But just looking at it, this should have been fixed right away because they're all minor violations. So one that concerned me was number five, if they did not have a barrier between the reception area and the limited area, that would have been a bit concerned, but the diagram had two doors. They said there was a wall that was there. So it's just very minor issues. And I see why that took so long for them to fix it because, as you said, it's going through a lot of the corporate hoopla, but they did get it done, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against it, but I just, it just seems a little, you know, deflective.
This is Vice President Nash. I agree with those comments. To me, I was surprised by the number of violations, but then I was impressed by their eventual dealing with them. And I particularly liked the explanation for why some of them occurred. And it, it seemed like a good explanation and a common accidental occurrence. Anything else? Is there a motion?
Item 13, DCR Core Record Number 100067. Resource Referral Services is the applicant. The business premises is located at 10842 West Magnolia Boulevard. I make a motion to accept the staff for an investigation as reported.
This is Commissioner Lim. I second that.
Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
The time is now 4:26. We are going to take a break to 4:50. We will resume at that time.
We may resume.
Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now four fifty-seven, and we're going to resume the meeting. And for the record, I note that Commissioners Melendez, Farmby, and Lim are all present. We're going to now do item number fourteen, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 six five. The applicant is Medical Caregivers Company to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one zero three nine North Mission Road. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon. This is Licensing Analyst Giacchisorano. I will present item number fourteen for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 six five is associated with Medical Caregivers, Caregivers Company, excuse me. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one zero three nine North Mission Road in the Boyle Heights Community Plan area within Council District fourteen. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of January first, two thousand and eighteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C ten zero 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 one six zero LIC, to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one zero four point twenty for the Social Equity Program. Honor about September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, DCR provided notice to the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. One written comment in favor of the applicant stated that the dispensary has been an important part of the community since two thousand and seven. That is committed to safety. is in attendance and available to provide an overview of the compliance activities associated with this location at the end of this licensing presentation. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with a criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes Licensing's presentation for this item. Compliance and enforcement will now provide the review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Hector Ali Khan, Senior Management Analyst, Enforcement Division. A compliance inspection was conducted on August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four at location ten thirty nine North Mission Road. During the compliance inspection, two deficiencies were identified. One was the employee badges, missing the DCR core record. And the second item was record retention, training, training materials. NTC was issued on October sixteen, two thousand and twenty four, and there's a deadline of November sixteen, two thousand and twenty four. At present, the operator has provided sufficient evidence of the employee badges, so that has been confirmed as corrected. And they do need to provide evidence of the training materials or training documents. Those are the two items for this location.
This is Vice President Nash. Has there been any communication from the applicant regarding the training materials?
At present, there hasn't been any communication from them. The NTC was issued on October sixteenth.
Can you clarify exactly what the violation is? Because it kind of indicates that it might be one of two things. Is it that they haven't maintained them for seven years or they just haven't provided them?
Yeah, so normally when when our compliance inspection or compliance team goes out there, they ask for these documents. So sometimes these operators don't have hard copies at their premises, or they they have them digitally and they can't access them. So if they can't provide us the documentation, then they're gonna, it's gonna be identified as a deficiency. So they weren't able to provide us that documentation. They may, they may have it, they just, it wasn't accessible.
At that time?
Yes, correct.
This is Commissioner Melendez. When was the actual inspection done?
The inspection was done August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four.
August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, then the notice to correct went out October sixteenth?
That is correct.
That's quite a bit of time, huh?
Yes.
And in that time, did the, the inspector sit down with whoever was there and tell them what their notice to correct were?
That is correct. At the end of all of the compliance inspections, they do debrief with the staff. If there's any questions, they go over the deficiencies with them. And then they go back to the office and go over the evidence and then they'll work on the notice to correct and issue it. For, in this particular case, it was issued on October sixteenth.
Thank you, Commissioner Farmby. Hector, can you, just, I think I know the answer, but just for clarification. Upon like the inspection, once everything has been reviewed with the applicant, the app, there's nothing that prevents the applicant to start the process of correction even before the NTC is provided. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. Commissioner Farmby, let me just correct something. They have made some corrections and have reached out to the department. They corrected the badges.
Yeah, well, I wasn't talking about them in specific, but just in general, in terms of the process itself. And and the reason why I'm saying it's kind of going back to what Commissioner Melendez is saying around having time. You can actually start the process upon completing the overview, right? And then you get the NTC and you still have thirty additional days.
That, that is correct. It would be best management practice to, to practice that, to be prepared. We send out documentation in regards to what we're looking at. There's numerous trainings that Jason and DCR Licensing do throughout the year. So we, we prepare our, our licensees and operators. We, if they reach out to DCR, reach out to our websites and reach out to individuals, there's numerous resources out there. But yes, best management practice would prepare themselves, look at our documentation and do their own audits.
Thank you. I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly in the microphone. You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Winston Farrar. I'm the authorized representative for Medical Caregivers Company. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to discuss our annual retail license application. I'm here to support our application for an annual retail license for Medical Caregivers Company. We've been a part of the Los Angeles community since two thousand and seven, when we first obtained our big business tax registration from the city. As one of the original medical marijuana dispensaries, we have been committed to serving the community and adapting to evolving regulations for the past seventeen years. We are proud to reach this important point in the consideration of our license application. Our dedication to the community's well-being remains strong and we are committed to maintaining safety and fulfilling our responsibilities. We look forward to continuing our work with local regulatory agencies to adhere to the evolving rules and regulations for commercial cannabis business. Thank you for your considering of our application. We are eager, eager to work together to ensure the success of the City of Los Angeles's commercial cannabis application process. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Vice President Nash. You only had two discrepancies, which, to be honest, that's pretty darn good.
Correct, and, and we, we fixed the, the badge right away. As far as the training was concerned, we're owner operators, so we, we're, we're present there all the time. Having the in writing training has just never been the priority. We, we realize that we need to correct that going forward. Creating those SOPs and getting everything down on paper did obviously take a little bit of time. With our notice to correct, it didn't actually ask us to send any of the SOPs to, to the DCR, but just required us to maintain accurate records going forward and, and we are, we are doing that.
I think that the department does want you to send something. Is that correct?
I, I have the notice to correct here, sir, and, and it just, it just says, it, it wants us to maintain the training records going forward.
Jason Clean, Assistant Executive Director. Getting the standard operating procedures for the different activities, as well as some of the other documents where the state would be considered the lead agency, we have removed from our annual license application process. So they provide us the final approved state documents when they get, once they get their state annual license. But it's not a standalone requirement to go through this process. So he is correct that he does need to have the standard operating procedures there when our compliance team comes out, because that is a requirement of the state. But to the extent that they have it and can notify us that they've produced those documents and they have them, we don't need it for the applications purposes.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, well, I commend you on, on a, on a job for pretty well done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And congratulations on your longevity in this difficult business. Any questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Lim. It's unique to find someone that's been in operations in two thousand and seventeen to present. And my question is, can you tell us the volume, the profitability, the volume that you guys did in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine compared to today? How the environment has changed?
Well, I, the, the industry's had a lot of ups and downs, to say the least. Profitability, I think, right now is really difficult as, as the industry finds itself. You know, you guys as regulators are trying to figure out a good balance on taxation that allows to, the industry to flourish while, while not being overburdensome. And at the same time in Los Angeles specifically, we have had a difficult time trying to figure out how to regulate the people who are not licensed and the bad operators. Especially from somebody who's been in the, in the industry as long as I have, and it's always been a priority to make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. That's definitely. I, I wish I could have seen more progress on that front, but you know, nothing, nothing is perfect, so. But yeah, I would say the unlicensed operators right now, combined with the high taxes, make it really, really hard to compete in this marketplace. Just to be able to compete on price point, we basically have to eat our entire profit margin. And that's unfortunate, but I'm optimistic that, that we'll be able to solve that going forward.
This Commissioner Lim again. In terms of those illegal dispensaries in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, is there more now than before or?
Well, in two thousand and eight, there was kind of, there was a moratorium, or pre-two thousand and eight, there was a moratorium. So the idea of what was an unlicensed first licensed was, was not as clear. There also wasn't the same tax burden on, on dispensaries in two thousand and eight, so it was a much more even playing field that, that we just had our, our business tax registration and we were responsible for paying sales tax. But there were, there wasn't the state burden or the local burden of, of the additional excise taxes that we, we see now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farmby. Congratulations on your, on your business and wishing you the best of luck. How, how long have you been at this, this particular location?
Twenty, end of two thousand and twelve, I think, is when we started doing construction at open beginning of two thousand and thirteen.
And then have you had any partnerships with the surrounding community at all?
No, honestly, if, if, if you're familiar with the, the, the location, there's really not any residential around us. I, I, I'm not even sure we have residential within seven hundred feet. We have made some donations to like our local fire station. We do offer discounts to veterans, active service members, first responders, stuff like that, but, but beyond that, no.
Okay, and then one more, one more question around safety, your security. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we have security that is onsite, armed security during all business hours. Our, our, our surveillance is, is quite, quite extensive and we have a separate set of surveillance that's connected to offsite, an offsite company that, that monitors it during all non-business hours, and, and they work in hand with our alarm company.
Is that inside or outside?
Outside, outside.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good. Well, congratulations on your seventeen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a wonderful day.
Any deliberations?
After seventeen years, they have two minor violations, you know?
Yeah, I agree. I think they're doing a great job.
Is there a motion?
This Commissioner Lim, in regards to Agenda Number fourteen, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 six five, for a business located at one zero three nine North Mission Road. I make a motion to adopt the staff report dated October twenty one, two thousand and twenty four.
Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Mr. Visa, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
We are on to item number fifteen, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 three three. The applicant is Toluca Lake Collective, Inc., to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at three six five zero East Olympic Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. Then at this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon. This is Licensing Analyst Giacchino Serrano. I will present item number fifteen for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 three three is associated with Toluca Lake Collective Incorporated. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at three six five zero East Olympic Boulevard in the Boyle Heights Community Plan area within Council District fourteen. The applicant was, was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of January first, two thousand and eighteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C ten zero 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 one two five LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June third, two thousand and twenty five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC section one zero four point twenty for the social equity program. Honor about September fourth, two thousand and twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. For this applicant, DCR performed a compliance check of the business premises honor about August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. During the compliance check, DCR discovered no violations. Based on the department's analysis and the proposed project, the proposed project, I'm sorry, is consistent with a criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes Licensing's presentation for this item. Compliance and enforcement will now provide the review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A compliance inspection was conducted at thirty six fifty East Olympic Boulevard. By the way, Hector Ali Khan, Senior Management Analyst, Enforcement Division. And on that date, August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four, inspection was conducted and no deficiencies were observed, so the inspection was passed by the compliance team. Any questions?
This is Vice President Nash. I had to read that twice. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly in the microphone. You have ten minutes.
Good evening. I'm Arthur Hodge. I'm a representative of the business. I'm also the primary contact person. Been happy to be associated with Toluca Lake Collective since two thousand and sixteen, maybe two thousand and fifteen, possibly even earlier. Originally, Toluca Lake Collective, which is now in the Boyle Heights area, was a business known as TLC Elder Care, and it was specifically a hospice collective that would operate out of residential homes for people in hospice. Upon passage of Proposition D, it was no longer permissible to operate in a residential location. So the business relocated over to the, the Los Angeles area on Twenty Third Street at that time. Subsequently, as fortunate times would have it, a, a shopping center, a location opened up in Boyle Heights to be able to occupy a, a substantial sized building there in two thousand and sixteen. And so the retail facility was built out on the fourth floor of the, of one of the buildings at the Angeles Grand Plaza, which is right on Olympic Boulevard. If you're familiar with the area, it's right at the edge of the city limits. The city limits would be Calzone, you're about two blocks away from there. About a block away from where they filmed the Michael Jackson video, anyone who cares. In any event, the, the business is very happy to have the inspection and excited that there were no violations. It's a, a pre-Ico that uses all four of its uses. They make hash rosin. They also are cultivating. They have a distribution and retail. And there, I'm pleased to appear before you. Thank you for your time in considering this, and I want to thank DCR staff and, and their, their office for their work.
This Vice President Nash, again, I just want to commend the operator for having had the inspection and not having any violations. So I think that might be the first time that happened.
This Commissioner Lim, I think for the second, yeah. Yes, the two out of two hundred, three hundred that we've had. So we want to commend you for that.
Yeah, it's definitely commendable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you been at this location the entire time?
Pardon?
You've been at this location the entire time?
No, since two thousand and sixteen.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought you've been in existence.
Oh, no, it, it's been in existence since two thousand and five. Yeah, two thousand and five, and then until in two thousand and thirteen, when Prop D passed, it moved out of the residential. Yeah, two thousand five, and then until in twenty thirteen, when Prop D passed, it moved out of the residential hospice.
Thank you.
This Commissioner Melendez, uh, so is all the other three uh uses, are they all in the same building?
They are, the retail and a portion of the cultivation are on the fourth floor. More cultivation is on the third floor and manufacturing and distro are on the second floor. The first floor is occupied by C V S.
Thank you, and congratulations on your
Thank you.
Nice uh nice passage of your of your.
I'm good.
Thank you for being here. Any deliberations, commissioners? Okay, is there a motion?
Item fifteen, DCR.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Uh, DCR Core, item fifteen, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 three three. Uh, Toluca Lake Collective Incorporated, uh, business premises is located at three six five zero East Olympic Boulevard, uh, I make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation as stated before.
Commissioner Melendez, a second. Ms. Treviso, please call the roll.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Hi.
The motion passes.
Item number sixteen is DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 one one. Applicant is L.A. Wonderland Caregivers, Inc. to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one five one West Seventeenth Street. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand in the virtual meeting.
Thank you, at this time, we'll hear from department staff.
Good evening, this is licensing analyst Giacchisarano. I will present item number sixteen for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 one one is associated with L.A. Wonderland Caregivers Incorporated. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one five one West Seventeenth Street in the Central City Community Plan Area within Council District fourteen. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of March nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license C ten zero 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 one three one LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June fourth, twenty twenty five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC section one zero four point twenty for the social equity program. Honor about September fourth, twenty twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. One co- community member provided testimony in favor of the application, expressing gratitude for the service the applicant provides to the community. A compliance inspection was recently conducted and a representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide an overview of the compliance activities associated with this location at the end of this licensing presentation. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, ECR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes licensing's presentation for this item. Compliance and enforcement will now provide their review.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Hector Ali Khan, Senior Management Analyst, Enforcement Division. This uh report is for one five one West Seventeenth Street. A compliance inspection was conducted at the property and on October twenty second, twenty twenty four, a notice to correct was issued. The deadline is November twenty second, twenty twenty four. The four items that were identified was the use of a DBA, doing business as, they're required to submit a modification against the record. Number two is regarding the video surveillance recording system, um, they need to provide proof that they can film facial recognition at the point of sales, the face, the face of the seller and the patron. The third item was the visitor's log. And the fourth deficiency that was identified was the employee badges, not having the DCR Core Record Number on the on the badges, so at present, they still have till November twenty second to provide DCR with corrective action. Any questions?
Commissioner, when was the actual uh inspection and again? Date?
Yeah, I'm sorry, do you happen to have the date of the compliance inspection?
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, I think it's September eighteen.
That is correct, September eighteen, thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have a speaker card, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
I don't have a speaker card for this applicant, is there anybody in the uh virtual queue?
I don't have a raised hand, but I will um make an announcement. If the applicant's representative is on the virtual meeting, please dial star nine to raise your hand. There is a raised hand now. Call her with phone number ending in nine, seven, seven, eight, please state your name and how you represent the applicant, you have ten minutes to address the commission.
Uh, hi, my name is Leanne Gunchar, I represent L.A. Wonderland Caregivers. Uh, we do do business as L.A. Wonderland. Um, the complaint against the DBA was that we have a different DBA, not quite sure what the the problem was there. Um, anyways, we've been at the same location since um uh two thousand thirteen and uh this business has been operational, one of the original, uh, pre-I C Os, uh, operation from two thousand seven. Um, we have a secure parking lot, um, armed parts, we have been paying all our taxes and um we'll provide good jobs for the community. Um, anyways, um, please consider us for um permanent application, thank you.
This is Vice President Nash. What is the name of the business that you're operating under?
Uh, the full name of the corporation is L.A. Wonderland Caregivers, Inc. And uh we operate as L.A. Wonderland, that's what's what's on the um on design.
Okay, uh, Mr. Colleen, uh, could you address this discrepancy violation? The first violation says that they don't have the word quote, provide, close quote, as part of their fictitious business name.
May I invite Hector back up to the podium?
Hello, commissioners, Hector Ali Khan, Enforcement Division. Yes, the DBA Wonderland Caregivers, it needs to be um registered with the county. So every DBA has to have a fictitious business name registered with the county and that documentation provided to DCR. So it's a simp- just as simple, if anybody wanted to open up a fictitious business name, you go to the county, register it, and then provide us with that documentation.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, but the violation said documentation for the use of the word provide as a fictitious business name has not been registered, so it seems like he was saying that the only DBA was a shortened version of the Inc. Uh, and and didn't have the word provide on that, and I think that's what
Yeah.
They're referring to.
That's that's correct, so that um the compliance analyst did not add the fictitious business name in that section. So it was, it it was a, yes, that N T C need to be to be revised to reflect the current DBA. And this way, he could fully understand that what's required is that DBA that's being currently used needs to be registered with the county. So we'll we'll take that in consideration with with his time and in regards to providing um a sufficient evidence.
Okay, this is Commissioner Lim, so I just want to make sure the DBA, when they did the inspection, they weren't using any DBA with the name provide in it.
That is correct, they they were not using any other DBA other than the entity name minus the Inc.
If, I'm not sure if that has to be
Okay.
Registered, then if that's a, that's a corporate name is L.A. Wonderland Caregivers, Inc.
Correct.
And they're using L.A. Wonderland Caregiver.
Correct, and that and that um compliance inspect inspector did ask for that fictitious business name um to be registered.
Understood.
Jason Colinas, Assistant Executive Director. Um, the the point that I believe is trying to be made here is on the memo, the provide is being interpreted as that was the DBA the business was using. But in reality, when the inspector went out, it just said L.A. Wonderland Caregivers. It did not have the Inc. But in that circumstance, that is their business name and a member of the public would know that L.A. Wonderland Caregivers is the legal entity, L.A. Wonderland Caregivers, Inc., not some other entity, so they don't have to actually register their they don't have to register a fictitious business name when it's their legal name minus the Inc. I believe that was the point Commissioner Lim was asking.
Yes.
He is correct.
And and I'm not giving legal advice, but that's my understanding, that's all.
Thank you for that clarification, no, you are correct, that that word provide was mistakenly placed there. It should have been the entity's name, but thank you for that clarification on registering the fictitious business name.
This is Vice President Nash, with all that in mind, can we clarify, especially for the applicant, what, if anything, they need to do in connection with the fictitious business name?
Well, the compliance inspector did ask for it to be registered with the county. But it, and will take his his um his statements into consideration and 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 review that with our executive staff in regards to whether or not it needs to be registered with the county, that fictitious business name. Which is the entity name.
Okay, so you'll work that out with the applicant and advise them?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Contrair, do you understand uh what we've just said and that the department will be reaching out to you regarding what, if anything, you might need to do in connection with the fictitious business name?
Yes, thank you, I fully understand that.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Thanks, Hector.
Thank you.
Uh, I do have a question, this Commissioner for the applicant. Um, wha- what's your progress on the other three uh uh notice to correct items regarding surveillance surveillance system, access to limited area and I ID of employees?
Uh, we have already, uh, we already changed the IDs, uh, the um, we are upgrading the uh um the system to to include the different uh le- different uh um angle, uh, for, you know, for the um surveillance. So that's going to be done um by tomorrow, I think. And uh, I'm not sure, what's the third one?
The this Commissioner Lim, in regards to maintain a limited access law for the limited area.
Yeah, we we already do not allow anybody uh who's uh not allowed to inside, of course, but we will be, we already have a log, um, um, you know, in place. Everybody has to sign it.
So when you did this, Commissioner Lim, when you did, when there was an inspection, did you have this access log? And did you show the access log to the compliance officer?
No, no, we did not have the access log, but we do have one now.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
This is Vice President Nash, and do you understand that you're going to need to provide evidence of that log and and evidence of any of the other violations to the department quickly?
Uh, yes, yes. I fully understand that, everything should be done by uh by the end of the week, by tomorrow, basically.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any deliberations? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, in regards to Agenda number sixteen, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 one one for a business located at one five one West Seventeenth Street, I make a motion that we adopt the staff report dated October twenty one, two thousand twenty four.
Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Ms. Treviso, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item number seventeen is DCR Core Record Number three two zero zero two nine. Applicant is S E Retail One LLC to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at six two zero zero West Manchester Avenue. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you, at this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good evening, this is licensing analyst Giacchisarano. I will present item number seventeen for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number three two zero zero two nine is associated with S E Retail One LLC. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at sixty two hundred West Manchester Avenue in the Westchester Playa del Rey Community Plan Area within Council District eleven. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of May second, twenty twenty four. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C ten zero 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 one three two one LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June sixth, twenty twenty five. The applicant is subject to the requirements of LAMC section one zero four point twenty for the social equity program. To comply with the equity share requirements, SEIAs must possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business, a proportional right to vote and to the profits and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, DCR reviewed the corporate and ownership documentation provided for this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at that time. Honor about September fourth, twenty twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. Of the ten comments provided by the public, a majority were in favor of the application. Those against the application cited the saturation of dispensaries in the area and the public safety concerns that come with multiple dispensaries. Those in favor cited the staff as knowledgeable and helpful and admire how a once abandoned building is now a vibrant structure in the community. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. Staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Commissioners, any questions for the department?
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, I do have a question. What what is the nearest other legal dispensary in that area? I believe there's a Med Men, that's in Sepulveda. But I think that's not it.
Uh, yes, Commissioner, there is a applicant name, Nature's Cure Incorporated, located at eighty seven forty South Sepulveda Boulevard, Suite one oh five to one oh seven, Los Angeles, California, nine zero zero four five. Um, I do believe that is doing business as one of the Med Men locations and And currently, that business is outside of a hundred, seven hundred foot radius. There's nothing else on our licensing map within thousands of feet of that location other than the other licensed business.
Thank you. I have a speaker card from Samantha Tabak. Will you please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Speak directly in the microphone. You have ten minutes.
Hi, my name is Samantha Tabak. I'm the Executive Director of Compliance and Licensing for S.E. Retail One DBA Traditional. I, yep, there we go. It's right back. So to address your question about the nearest dispensary, you can see that it's very light. But there's a sort of yellow circle on that image that's showing a seven hundred foot buffer. The MedMen is just outside of it. And I will say that during the construction of it, at one point it was closed. So I'm not even certain how viable it is as a location anymore. But it's a very vibrant area. There's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of tourists. When you go into the store, I frequently see people with their suitcases because they're on their way from or to LAX, which is really great to see. We have twenty-two cameras with ninety-day playback. We have armed guards during the day. If you want to go to the next one. It's very bright. So we design all of our stores around our signature strange. This is the OG. So it definitely adds a splash of color to the neighborhood. We joked that the signage should have been purple instead of black because then it would have been a little bit of a shout out to the Lakers. As you can see, it's got a beautiful aesthetic. Yeah, we can go to the next one. We, as a company, try to be really involved in our communities. The picture of that cleanup is actually at one of our other locations, but we do frequently clean up trash around the location here on Manchester and in the parking lot. During the holidays, we'll create hygiene kits for local charities, participate in beach cleanups. We also offer discounts to the businesses surrounding the location. So if you own the gym next door, you can come in and you can get ten percent off. We have, of course, all of our information listed and we aim to have a twenty-four hour response to any complaints. Sometimes the complaints, we are not able to investigate. Someone will complain that they smelled smoke. We'll reach out, of course, absolutely. Please give us the time. We would, you know, our staff has been instructed not to smoke. We want to take this very seriously. Even the day, any information so that we can go back and look at our footage. And then unfortunately, there haven't been any follow-up from the complainers or from people making the complaints. Can we go to the next one? Right now, we have five full-time employees. I'm sure there's not a lot of budtenders out there listening right now, but we are hiring and it is hard to find good help. So please check out our traditional. It's not, well, it's on LinkedIn and on Indeed. And we do offer healthcare, retirement. And yeah, that's all I have to say. And I'm happy to have, are there any questions you might have?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
This is Commissioner Lim. I know that area very well. I live right around there. So I've been to Trucksden many times. I was there when Trucksden first opened up. The I didn't know the liquor store was shut down and abandoned for so long. When did you start operation at that location?
Oh, my goodness. It was at the Oh, it was June, I guess.
Twenty twenty-four?
Yes. We did get, this was one of the lottery winners. So we did get the license like started that process prior to that. But that's when we were actually able to open our doors.
And this commission did approve MedMen for their license about a couple of months ago. So I think they they are around and fairly busy. Awesome.
I hope so. Good for them.
So between red and yellow. Different colors.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Any deliberations? Is there a motion?
This is Commissioner Lim. In regards to number seventeen, DCR Core Record Number Three, Two, Zero, Zero, Two, Nine for the business located at Six, Two, Zero, Zero, West Manchester Avenue. I make a motion to adopt the staff report dated October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Ms. Treviso, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item number eighteen, DCR Core Record Number Three, Two, Zero, 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 Six. The applicant is ZZZ Enterprises, Inc. to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at Four, Zero, Zero, Six hyphen Four, Zero, One, Zero, North Eagle Rock Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good evening. This is licensing analyst, Kia Serrano. I will present item number eighteen for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number Three, Two, Zero, 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 Six is associated with ZZZ.
Sorry, this is City Attorney Allison Toll. Just wanted to announce that Commissioner Farmby did exit the room.
All conflict?
No. Commissioner Nash, it's your choice if you'd like to just briefly pause so that you can have all four commissioners here on this item or we can hold Commissioner Farmby. Since he did not hear the staff presentation, he won't be eligible to vote on the matter.
Let's move forward and we will not include him in this item.
Okay, thank you.
DCR Core Record Number Three, Two, Zero, 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 Six is associated with ZZZ Enterprises and Enterprises Incorporated. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at Four, Zero, Zero, Six dash Four, Zero, One, Zero, North Eagle Rock Boulevard in the northeast Los Angeles Community Plan area within Council District One. The applicant does not have a temporary approval with DCR. Since the submission of their application, the applicant has adhered to the requirements of the LAMC and is in the process of fulfilling the remaining requirements for the issuance of an annual license. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C ten, zero, 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 one, three, two, zero, LIC, to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. The applicant is subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one, zero, four point twenty for the social equity program. To comply with the equity share requirements, SEIAs must possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business, a proportional right to vote and to the profits, and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, DCR reviewed the corporate and ownership documentation provided for this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at the time. On or about September fourth, two thousand twenty-four, DCR provided the notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. One public comment was provided in favor of the application. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with a criteria for a Class One and Class Thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one, zero, four point zero four. I'll now turn it over to Assistant Executive Director Jason Colleen to finish the presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Colleen, Assistant Executive Director. I just want to recognize that the department receives special, well, the commission receives special correspondence from the Los Angeles Police Department for this agenda item. I have reviewed that letter. And based on the letter, it appears that LAPD has mistakenly thought that this is a public convenience or necessity request. In their letter to the commission, it is recommending that you don't grant a public convenience or necessity finding, which is not the issue before this body. Only the Los Angeles City Council can make a finding of public convenience or necessity. This community plan area, which is the northeast Los Angeles Community Plan area, has not reached undue concentration. It still has capacity for eighteen additional licenses. So there is no way for this body to deny this record based on not making a public convenience or necessity finding. Also, the fact that there are two licensees that are outside of seven hundred feet of this proposed location would not be grounds to deny this application. You know, LAPD, bless them, you know, don't get to make a determination of where these businesses can locate. The LAPD did point out a number of things that they would like to see conditioned within their letter. The only two items, item number one and item number fourteen, are the only things that are not addressed through either the Los Angeles Municipal Code or DCR's rules and regulations. Under California law, a commercial cannabis business retailer may operate between six AM and ten PM. So LAPD's request to limit this business's operations to six, to eleven AM to nine PM would require a public safety-related finding to add that condition. I do not see any evidence or justification for putting that condition on this business based on what was submitted and that it hardened and is not aware of any complaints, public safety or complaint-driven. This business has not had a single complaint. Nor have they failed a compliance inspection to warrant that. And then for item number fourteen on their list, the operator may attend periodic meetings with LAPD. That's definitely a good business practice, but that is not a requirement within the municipal code. And it's not necessarily something that is public safety-related. The applicant can voluntarily meet with the Narcotics Enforcement Division or the Senior Lead Officer for this area station. And they can, of course, reach out to the Council District and be in alignment with the various outreach and advocacy individuals within the council office, specifically like the folks that interact with the neighborhood council and the neighbors to make sure that this business is a good operator within this community and doesn't disrupt the community. I appreciate LAPD's letter. I have reviewed it. This is not a public convenience or necessity item. In my review, I do not see any reason where this business is being accused of creating a public safety issue that would require us to reduce their operating hours. And there is no requirement to force them to meet with LAPD Council Office or community members. It is a best practice. We will recommend that they do it, but I do not believe we can condition them to force them to do that. And that concludes the department's presentation.
This is Vice President Nash. Thank you for the detailed explanation and information. Any questions for the department?
This is Commissioner Lim. It's my understanding that our commission cannot put any conditions in regards to issuance of an annual license unless it's set forth in the staff report.
The 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 commission has the authority to review the entirety of the record. And if the commission believes that there's a condition that needs to be imposed to meet a public safety-related concern, this commission does have the ability to make those findings and add that condition on the record independent of a staff report. But it would require the commission to make a public safety-related finding to justify placing a condition on the record for the department's span point based on reviewing the correspondence. I cannot find a justifiable public safety issue to resolve. But, you know, as part of the larger body, this commission does have the authority to set a condition.
A very short point of clarification. This is City Attorney Allison Toll. There must be evidence in the record in order for you to make that public safety finding. So that must have been presented to you today for you to make that finding and subsequently impose conditions based on the Los Angeles Municipal Code.
Ms. Commissioner Lim, thank you very much.
This is Vice President Nash. Any more questions for the department? Hey, I have a speaker card. Will the applicants representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly in the microphone and you have ten minutes.
Good evening. Hello, Commissioners. Mike Sagian, Licensing Consultant for ZZZ Enterprises, Inc., DCR Core Record Number Three, Two, Zero, 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 Six. This business is located at Four, Zero, Zero, Six through Four, Zero, One, Zero, North Eagle Rock Boulevard. This is a Phase Three Round Two applicant. And they are located on the southeast side of Eagle Rock Boulevard, just east of Verdugo Road. So this business is not operational yet. They are also one of the lottery winners. They submitted building plans to Building and Safety, which are already approved. And they're planning to begin construction early next month in November. And they plan to be operational at some point in quarter two of two thousand twenty-five. It has its own closed-off parking lot behind the building with fifteen dedicated spots for the tenants. It's not shared with anybody else. There's there's a big shopping center right next to it, which is owned by the same landlord. And that whole block is owned by the same landlord who provides its own security. But obviously, the business, once it becomes operational, is going to have its own twenty-four seven security personnel. And Jason, what's the date on that letter, if I may ask?
From the LAPD?
Yeah, yeah.
October twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, so I have not seen that yet. I'd love to. But as a matter of fact, we reached out to the CPAP of the northeast LAPD Division last night. His name is Bradley. He's already, thank you so much. Appreciate that. He's already responded this morning thanking me for reaching out and being proactive. And he listed a couple of conditions which he would like us to abide by. If I recall, one of them was about signage, which I believe it's in line with the municipal code. And the other one was about some sort of special business hours, I guess. That area has their own restrictions on what hours businesses can be open, which is slightly different than what LAMC allows. So we'll definitely stay in communication with the police division to you know, be in good standing and operate at the correct hours.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, this is Commissioner Melendez. How's the parking situation there? Do you have parking in the back or?
Yeah, plenty of parking in the back and the landlord will even allow. I mean, I don't, I don't think we'll need spillover parking, but the shopping center is literally a stone's throw away. And there's tons of parking there.
This is Commissioner Melendez. That's where the O'Reilly is and everything else, right?
Correct. There's a O'Reilly Auto Parts. There's a Rite Aid Subway, Papa John's, UPS Store. It's a very big shopping center.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Any deliberations?
I think Jason's pretty much handled most of that earlier, so I think I'm good.
Yeah, I agree.
This is Vice President Nash. I I agree too. I read the letter very carefully and the requested conditions. And I I agree with Jason exactly as he stated. In that case, is there a motion?
This is Commissioner Melendez. For item number number eighteen, DCR Core Record Number DCR Core Record Number three-two-zero-zero-zero-six. For the business premises located at four-zero-zero-six through four-zero-one-zero North Eagle Rock Boulevard. I move to adopt the staff recommendations as stated on their staff report dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
This Commissioner Lim, I second that.
Ms. Traviso, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
And we welcome back Commissioner Farmby. Let the record reflect that it's now exactly six o'clock and Commissioner Farmby has rejoined the meeting.
For item number nineteen, DCR Core Record Number one-zero-one-seven-nine-zero. Applicant is Smart Collective, Inc., to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one-zero-seven-four-five West Riverside Drive.
Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from department staff.
Good evening. Good evening. This is Licensing Analyst Alan Dubois. I will present item number nineteen for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one-zero-one-seven-nine-zero is associated with Smart Collective, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one-zero-seven-four-five West Riverside Drive, Suite A in Sherman Oaks, Studio City, Toluca Lake, Coanga Pass Community Plan Area within Council District Two. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one-zero-four-point-zero-six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-three-six-dash-LIC, to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June fourth, twenty twenty-five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of the LAMC Section one-zero-four-point-two-zero for the Social Equity Program. On or about September fourth, twenty twenty-four, DCR provided notice of the Community Meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission Meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. One oral comment was provided in favor of the application. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a Class One and Class Thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to the CECL guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one-zero-four-point-zero-four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Any questions for the department? Will the applicant's representative please approach the podium? Please state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant. Please speak directly into the microphone. You have ten minutes.
Good evening or good afternoon. My name is Anna Heat Muradian. I'm the owner of Smart Collective. And, um, I've been an operator since two thousand and eleven. We were on Burbank, then we moved to Toluca Lake. Uh, sure been a roller coaster being a pre-I C O for that long and, um, couldn't wait for this day. It's, it's, thank you for the opportunity to be finally regulated legal and have a license and more clear instructions how to operate. Um, I've been a business owner since I was twenty-four and all I knew is corporations, businesses, taxes, and this type of business was something new for me. Since we didn't have clear regulations, I've tried my best to stay as legal as I could, obviously, but there've been a lot of challenges and I live in the community. I'm very much involved with everyone. My staff has been with me for twelve years. They're also from the community. Um, I don't know. I know my neighbors, my business, um, neighbors. Everyone, pretty much. We're a very small community, so I'm very happy to be there. And I'm there whenever everyone needs us. And again, thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, DCR staff worked really hard throughout the years. We've worked with Jason a lot, so it's been hard for everyone, but thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. This is Vice President Nash. Um, I think I live near there and I'm, I'm not sure where you are. What's your cross street?
We're right in front of Baja Fresh and Zango Chicken in a medical dental medical building. My landlords are dentists.
It's probably the Lankersham.
Yeah, it's between Coanga and Lankersham.
I know what it's like.
It's a nice area.
Thank you.
Of course.
Uh, thank you for being here.
This is Commissioner Melendez. Anna, could you spell your last name?
Muradian, M-U-R-A-D-Y-A-N.
And, uh, this Commissioner Melendez was again, Anna, how long have you been in, uh, in operation?
Since two thousand and eleven with Smart Collective.
Smart Collective.
Yes.
And how long have you been in this building that you're in now?
Uh, we moved to Toluca Lake, two thousand and fifteen. Before that, we were on one-zero-six-five-one Burbank Boulevard. Right the same cross streets, Coanga and Lankersham, pretty much in a neighborhood.
So, Ms. Commissioner Melendez, so when you were at this location, when you were issued the license on the twenty-second? Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any deliberations? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Item nineteen, DCR Core Record one-zero-one-seven-nine-zero. Smart Collective is an express radius applicant. Business premises is located at one-zero-seven-four-five West Riverside Drive, Suite A. Uh, I make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation as stated in the report.
It's Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Farmby?
Yes, I'm Commissioner Farmby. Aye. I didn't say my name.
Is that a aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Melendez?
Commissioner Melendez, aye.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item number twenty, DCR Core Record Number one-zero-one-seven-eight-one. The applicant is four-two-zero-for-the-People Cooperative, Inc., to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at one-two-four-three-three West Ventura Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from department staff.
Good evening. This is Licensing Analyst Alan Dubois. I will present item number twenty for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one-zero-one-seven-eight-one is associated with four-twenty-for-the-People Cooperative, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at one-two-four-three-three West Ventura Boulevard in the Sherman Oaks, Studio City, Toluca Lake, Coanga Pass Community Plan Area within Council District Four. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one-zero-four-point-zero-six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-four-six-dash-LIC, to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June seventh, twenty twenty-five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one-zero-four-point-two-zero for the Social Equity Program. On or about September fourth, twenty twenty-four, DCR provided notice of the Community Meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission Meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a Class One and a Class Thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to CECL guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine that this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one-zero-four-point-zero-four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in this staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. This, that concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the department?
Uh, this is Commissioner Lim. I just want to clarify that the virtual commu- uh, community meeting was held on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I, I wasn't sure I got the date.
This is Licensing Analyst Alan Dubois. Uh, the virtual community meeting was held on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
The staff report that we have here, this Commissioner Lim, states the virtual community meeting was held on August twenty-ninth. So do we need to do an oral amendment?
No, you're correct. They had it in two different sections. Uh, it said, you're correct, Commissioner Lynn. The virtual community meeting was held on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
So when you refer to September twenty-sixth, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, what were you referring to?
Um, Jason Kline, Assistant Executive Director, um, all of the, well, the first three cases that had to be re-noticed, those three cases, the community meeting was held on September twenty-sixth. For not cases nine through twenty-four, all of those community meetings were held on August twenty-ninth. So if we misspoke either during the oral presentation or in the staff report, the correct date for the community meeting is August twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four.
This is Commissioner Lim, thank you.
Any other questions for the department? Hey, I do not have a speaker card for this applicant. Is there anyone in the give?
We do not have a raised hand, but I will make an announcement. If, and if the applicant's representative is on the virtual meeting, please dial star nine to raise your hand. We do have a raised hand now. Caller with phone number ending in two-six-four-zero, please state your name and how you represent the applicant. You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Hello, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Michael Weiss and I am the applicant and sole owner of this, uh, establishment. And I thank you kindly for your time today. Um, we've been serving the city of Los Angeles since two thousand and six. I started in this industry by working with my mother, running a medical practice, and I modeled our business after it. After learning all that I could and while pursuing a business degree, I was able to open my own collective. Sadly, my mother passed away in late two thousand and sixteen from her second battle with cancer. And at the same time, my father was diagnosed with AML leukemia, which he has survived by means of a bone marrow transplant. Along with running this company, I had been tasked with helping both in their treatments, making it very difficult to enter public spaces through fear of bringing in home COVID or any other kind of illnesses. And we've also operated this business for eighteen years without any sort of banking or funding assistance like most small businesses are able to get. I think she would be extremely proud to see us still providing the community and women in particular with these services. To honor my mother, I've always held that it is my company's duty to assist the residents of Los Angeles and surrounding communities in finding what makes their treatments for cancer or anything we provide that a doctor recommends easier to obtain and from a reputable legal tested source. I believe we have accomplished this as many of our clients, some going on eighteen years, now travel an hour or more to obtain their medication from us and ask for our guidance and expertise for going on eighteen years. We run an annual T-shirt sale fundraiser for breast cancer and donate all the proceeds, including production costs to Relay for Life, a charity cancer, a cancer charity. And we've also run a canned food drive and donated the proceeds locally in coordination with a supermarket. In two thousand and eighteen, we moved our location to its current space after realizing the prior location would not pass the new regulation. We offer affordable deals for medical cannabis to veterans, terminally ill, and other applicable patients as well. Along with ample street parking provided by the city through meters in front of our store, we also offer seventeen dedicated parking spots, including two handicap spaces, two hundred feet from our front store, front door on Ventura Boulevard. We also offer two parking spots additionally upon request behind the retail. We have also served the recreational cannabis community at this location as of licensure in two thousand and nineteen with tested and safe products in a safe environment. And, uh, we employ multiple security staff and hire additional when necessary. We keep our front store, our store door locked at all times and only grant access to those who provide their identification. We thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. This is Vice President Nash. Thank you and, uh, thank you for sharing your story. Congratulations on your longevity and, uh, thank you for your service to, uh, those in need. Uh, what is your closest cross street?
We're closest cross street would be Witsett and Ventura Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, are there any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, this Commissioner Farmby, uh, how you doing? Um, you had mentioned that you had seventeen parking spots. Um, I'm familiar with that area. Can you tell me? Were those parking spots located?
When you, when you go out of our store and you head to, on Ventura Boulevard towards Witsett, we have, uh, the lot right before the building that's in the corner there that has a couple of, uh, businesses that I think there's a chiropractor's office and there's another one. And right in between that and this place called Sarah's Dine and Dash, I've rented the entire parking lot, uh, for use for our clients and it has come in so much handy because they are able to safely park their car, walk only about a couple, like a hundred fifty feet and they're in our store. Um, is there any other question regarding that? Kind of hard to picture, but it's literally the, the, the closest parking lot towards Witsett if you're heading, uh, 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 east, I think, uh, if you're heading, you know, towards, uh, the valley from, coming from Laurel Canyon, uh, at Witsett, we have the lot right on the corner there.
Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to picture it, but I, I, I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, what does a four-twenty stand for?
Well, four-two-zero was kind of like an indicator a lot of people have used to indicate the use of cannabis. So we kind of played on that to, to figure that people could see that we are cannabis without being like too brazen about it, but that's just kind of like become, uh, a national indicator of cannabis, uh, in our industry and, you know, in, in, uh, public domain.
It's very subtle. Thank you.
Uh, to be honest, we didn't pick the name. We were actually, you know, uh, we picked a license that, uh, our lawyer had successfully done because this was back in the, you know, really early days. No one had licenses. No one knew what they were doing, but we made sure we had a you know, really early days. No one had licenses. No one knew what they were doing, but we made sure we had a lawyer that did it by the book and that we wouldn't be violating any laws and uh, that was one of the names on the table. So we picked it up and we ended up keeping it. People love it. So, um, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your being here.
Any deliberations?
No deliberation, but I have to say that question kind of made my day. But, uh, Commissioner Lim, I believe, I really appreciate the, the really sincere inquisitiveness about what it, uh, what was four twenty. I, I, I do just want to, want to commend, uh, Michael and, and his family, uh, for the longevity. Um, you know, in, in the business, I mean, I think we've heard time and time again, a lot of folks have come before us, have been kind of struggling in the business, especially as of late. So I just really wanted to lift that up.
Thank you. I, I second that. Uh, this is Vice President Nash, and I actually listened to a podcast one time, uh, explaining most likely where the name four twenty came from. So if you haven't heard that, I'll share that with Commissioner Lim later on. If there's no further deliberations, I'm going to make the motion for item number twenty, D C R core record number one zero one seven eight one for the business located at one two four three three West Ventura Boulevard. I move to adopt staff recommendations as stated in the staff report dated October twenty one, two thousand and twenty four.
Commissioner Farmby, I second.
Uh, Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item number twenty one, D C R core record number one zero one seven six eight. Applicant is SoCal the Syndicate, Inc. To approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at six three two two North Fallbrook Avenue. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from department staff.
Good evening. This is licensing analyst Alan Dubois. I will present item number twenty one for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. D C R core record number one zero one seven six eight, pardon me, is associated with SoCal the Syndicate, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at six three two two North Fallbrook Avenue in the Canoga Park, Winnetka, Woodland Hills, West Hills Community Plan Area within Council District Three. The applicant was issued temporary approval by D C R February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with the L A M C one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C one zero dash zero 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 one two six dash L I C. To conduct retail with onsite sales, commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June fourth, two thousand and twenty five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of L A M C section one zero four point two zero for the social equity program. On or about September fourth, two thousand and twenty four, D C R provided notice of the community meeting and cannabis regulation commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on August twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. D C R also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. D C R did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine, determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons D C R or the commission may deny a license. At present, D C R is not aware of any existing facts and circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in L A M C section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, D C R recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the department?
Uh, this is Commissioner Lim. In regards to the, uh, staff report, it refers that the notice was sent, uh, to the community on August eighth, two thousand and twenty four. It also said the virtual community meeting was held on August eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Uh, so I believe, uh, Mr. Dubois stating that it was held on August twenty ninth is probably accurate and not the August eighth date.
Thank you, Commissioner Lim. You are correct. Jason Clean, Assistant Executive Director. I would like to verbally amend the D C R staff report to reflect that the virtual community meeting was held on August twenty ninth of two thousand and twenty four. And in lieu of adopting the department's recommendation, it would be to adopt the recommendation in the department's report as amended orally at the table. Thank you for pointing that out.
Any other questions for the department?
I don't have a speaker card for this applicant. Is there someone in the virtual queue?
Yes. Caller with phone number ending in six six five six, please state your name and your relationship to the applicant. You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Hello, my name is Katie Podine. I'm general counsel for SoCal the Syndicate. SoCal has been in E M M D operating in the city of L A. And we pride ourselves on being, uh, a good business for the neighborhood and respectful of the community that we're in. We provide, um, um, we provide, excuse me, uh, we donate to, to, um, a number of charities and sponsor families each year on Christmas. Frequently, we will have a, uh, food truck. Um, or previous years, we've had a food truck and we have provided free meals for the fire station across the street as a thank you, uh, for, for servicing the neighborhood. We employ, um, a number throughout L A, we employ approximately sixty employees between our retail, uh, manufacturing and distribution, and I would be happy to answer any questions for you.
This is Vice President Nash. Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Uh, this is Commissioner Lim. How long have you been at the six three two two Fallbrook Avenue location?
Oh, quite a while. I have only been in-house counsel since twenty twenty two. I know they've been operating there since at least twenty seventeen, but there's, I mean, maybe Jason knows better than I do, but, um, years before then. There, as it's been operated by the syndicate, it hasn't moved.
I can confirm what the applicant is saying. Since they submitted the application, once D C R was created in two thousand and eighteen, this record has always been associated with the Fallbrook address. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your being here.
Any deliberations? Is there a motion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Lim. In regards to agenda number twenty one, D C R core record number one zero one seven six eight. Your business located at six three two two North Fallbrook Avenue. I make a motion to adopt, uh, to adopt the staff report as amended in today's, uh, hearing.
Commissioner Melendez, I second. Ms. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item number twenty two, D C R core record number one zero zero six two four. Applicant is Downtown Collective, Inc. To approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at eight one five one West Third Street. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
Uh, no, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good evening. This is licensing analyst Alan Dubois. I will present item number twenty two for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. D C R core record number one zero zero six two four is associated with Downtown Collective, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at eight one five one West Third Street in the Wilshire Community Plan Area within Council District Five. The applicant was issued temporary approval by D C R with an effective date of January first, two thousand and eighteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with L A M C one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C one zero dash zero 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 one one six dash L I C. To conduct retail with onsite sales, commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June third, two thousand and twenty five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of the A, L A M C section one zero four point two zero for the social equity program. On or about September fourth, two thousand and twenty four, D C R provided the notice of the community meeting and cannabis regulation commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual meeting was held on August twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. D C R also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. In general, the oral and written comments provided by the public were against the application. Many addressed the saturation of dispensaries in the neighborhood. The public, nearby residents complained of safety, trash, loitering, and cannabis usage in the adjoining residential areas, and one local resident claimed that Downtown Collective is not here for the community. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons D C R or the commission may deny a license. At present, D C R is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in L A M C section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, D C R recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the department?
Yes, this is Commissioner Melendez. Jason, uh, it's addressing, uh, s- sensitive use, uh, near this, uh, this address. Can you address that?
Um, there are no sensitive uses within seven hundred feet of this business. Um, there is another licensed retail storefront business farther down on Third Street, but it's outside of seven hundred feet. Um, and I don't see any schools, parks, libraries, or daycare facilities, um, north or south of this location. This applicant has selected a location that is on Third Street in the middle of two other licensed businesses, but distanced more than seven hundred feet from both. And, um, you know, I know the question wasn't asked, but, uh, the correspondence that the commission did receive in writing um, is reflective of some of the comments that the person who submitted the written documentation provided at the community meeting as well as the written testimony. And I, I do want to iterate that we have had no complaints submitted through the complaint portal for this location. Um, if the, um, you know, if the resident who has concerns about this business believes that this business is violating any of our rules and regulations or the law, we would appreciate if the complaint was submitted through the complaint portal so our compliance and enforcement division could follow up. But to date, we've received no complaints, so we have nothing to report back on.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, excuse me. Any other questions for the department?
I have a speaker card for the applicant Mara Stuser. Do you please come to the podium, state your name for the record and your relationship to the applicant? You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Mara. I'm the general manager of Downtown Collective. Um, our team at Downtown Collective is committed to being a contributing member of the Wilshire Mid-City community, and part of that includes ensuring the safety of our customers and surrounding patrons. We have an extensive security system in place with security guards on site during all hours of operation who will be monitoring the premises, including the alleyway behind the shop and the side streets which connect to the residential area. Um, we have twenty-four hour surveillance with ninety days recording history. Uh, our team is extremely passionate about community service and giving back to the community. A lot of our team members are from the community. They live within the area. They're passionate about maintaining the safety of our neighbors, our surrounding businesses, and we look forward to, um, reopening our shop closer to the holidays and hosting some toy drives as well as food drives. And we appreciate your time today in consideration of Downtown Collective's application.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mara, this is go. Commissioner Melendez, uh, how many parking spots would you say you have?
We have twelve. Yeah, it is a shared lot with our neighbor who's a coffee shop, but they're open till four P M usually. So throughout the evenings, we have all twelve spaces.
Uh, this, this Commissioner Lim, it seems like you're on Third Street, right next to Crescent Heights.
Yeah.
And next to the Groundwork Coffee Company.
Yes, almost.
And the whole Third Street there is all commercial property. The houses and your door entryways that facing toward Third Street?
Correct, yes.
And seems like the nearest, uh, residential area is, would be on
Kilke.
Kilkey?
Yeah.
Kilkey Drive?
Yes, which would be like behind the back of the shop. So our doors face Third Street. Our neighbor right next door to us is Neighborhood Coffee, so they would be, um, facing the side of Kilke.
Right, and, and it seems, um, is there a, it's because this is all commercial on Third Street, so is there some sort of barrier?
There's an alleyway in the back that kind of separates the businesses from the, um, neighborhood.
And have you received any complaints from neighbors about?
No.
Facility?
Uh, the store itself has actually been closed for, I think, about a year now, so we're getting ready to reopen. So I personally haven't received any complaints. Um, I have seen the one that was sent through, and of course, we're going to be very cautious upon a reopening of, um, you know, just protecting the neighborhood and the families.
Uh, and why was the store closed for about a year?
Uh, the, there was a transition of ownership and, um, one of the other operators decided to close up shop and my team took over and we're going to reopen it. Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're part of the former?
Yes.
Oh, you were?
Yeah, there was a, a sale and then a, a take back.
This is Vice President Nash. Uh, not a question, but just a suggestion. Um, it looks like you have a little bit of work to do with the community because there were, you know, five negative comments and, um, I know you've got a lot to do, but, um, to the extent possible, reaching out would be a good idea.
Absolutely. We intend to, and we will make sure that my number and other members of the team will always be visible and available for any neighbors who have any complaints about anything going on.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any deliberations?
This Commissioner Melendez, you know, I know that it goes really well because I go to Little Door quite a bit in El Carmen. I know that's real busy there. It's a lot of traffic. There's a lot of valet. Uh, it's not like it's the quietest spot in the world, and, uh, there are alleyways in the back, the buffer. So, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm, uh, I mean, uh, Jason addressed all the, all the different, uh, I mean, uh, Jason addressed all the, all the different, uh, concerns we had about there being any sensitive issues in that neighborhood. So to me, it's just another business in the neighborhood, you know, and that's the way I look at, you know, my take.
And this Commissioner Melendez, I completely agree. That is a very busy, busy street with a lot of retail, a lot of restaurants, a lot of valets. If you're going to live, you know, half a block from there, just, I think the noise and the, and the cars going by would be more crazy than a, uh, ca- cannabis retail store, without the five tw- four twenty.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Commissioner Melendez, uh, for item, DCR item number twenty-two. Uh, Core Record Number one zero zero six two four, uh, for the business premises located at eight one five one West Third Street, I move to adopt staff recommendations as stated in the staff report dated October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Ms. Traviso, will you please call the rule?
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item number twenty-three, DCR Core Record Number one zero zero six two one. Applicant is LAX CC, Inc., to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at eight three three two South Lincoln Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good evening. This is licensing analyst Alan Dubois. I will present item number twenty-three for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one zero zero six two one is associated with LAX, LAX CC, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at eight three three two South Lincoln Boulevard in the Westchester Playa del Rey Community Plan area within Council District Eleven. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C one zero dash zero 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 one four one dash LIC, to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one zero four point two zero for the social equity program. On or about August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, DCR provided notice of the Community Meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. All testimonies provided were in support of the application and provided by persons related to the business application. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a Class One and Class Thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to SEGA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to not, to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. This concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the department? Hearing none. We have a speaker card for Kevin Sperry. Would you please approach the podium, state your name for the record? You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Uh, hello, commissioners. My name is Kevin Sperry, and I'm the chairman, owner of LAX CC. Um, we are located at eight three three two Lincoln Boulevard, Los Angeles, California, nine zero zero four five, with DCR Core, DCR Core Record Number one zero zero six two one. Um, LAX has been a proud member of the Westchester Playa del Rey community since two thousand and six. Um, we take pride in maintaining a clean and welcoming environment for everybody. Um, we ensure our block is, uh, regularly clean and pressure washed, and we have professional landscapers care for the trees and the flowers surrounding the storefront. This is part of our ongoing commitment to keep our neighborhood beautiful and inviting for all of our customers and patients. Beyond maintaining our physical space, we actively contribute to the local economy. Many of our employees come from within this very community, and we make it a priority to offer the highest quality products at the most competitive prices. This way, we ensure that LAX CC remains a fair, equitable, equitable and valuable option for everyone in the neighborhood. Uh, we're ha- we're happy to, uh, answer any questions that you guys have for us today.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for the applicant? I won't be hearing any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any deliberations?
We only got three, three supports. They've been there since two thousand and nineteen. No complaints. I think I'm good.
That's Vice President Nash. I would agree. Is there a motion?
I think a motion. Item number, uh, twenty-three, DCR Core Record Number one zero zero six two one. Applicant LAX CC Incorporated, uh, business premises is located at eight three three two South Lincoln Boulevard. Uh, I make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation stated in the report.
Commissioner Melendez, a second.
Ms. Traviso, would you please call the rule?
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
And our last item for the night, item number twenty-four, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 five nine. Applicant is Green Dot Medicinal Cannabis Patients Group to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at four two zero zero South Lincoln Boulevard. Josie, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card nor a raised hand.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good evening. This is licensing analyst Alan Dubois. I will present item number twenty-four for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 five nine is associated with Green Dot Medicinal Cannabis Patients Group. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at forty-two hundred South Lincoln Boulevard in the Venice Community Plan area within Council District Eleven. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of January first, two thousand and eighteen. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC one zero four point zero six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C one zero dash zero 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 one two two dash LIC, to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June third, two thousand and twenty-five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one zero four point two zero for the social equity program. On or about August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, DCR provided the notice of the Community Meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business's premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. The virtual community meeting was held on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive all or written testimony for this applicant. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a Class One and Class Thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to SEGA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one zero four point zero four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the department? I have a speaker card for Jay Handel. Would you please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you have ten minutes to address the committee.
Thank you and good evening, commissioners and staff, and thank you for sticking it out this long. My name is Jay Handel. I'm the COO of the operation. Uh, first, a little bit about myself. I'm the former Venice Neighborhood Council Treasurer. I am the current Treasurer of the West LA Neighborhood Council, a member for fifteen years. I am the co-chair of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates. I am the chair of the Western Regional Alliance of Councils Homeless Committee, which represents all thirteen neighborhood and community councils on the west side, and I am still an appointed LAPD Commission Hearing Officer. About the store. We started in two thousand and fourteen, just celebrating its tenth year anniversary. We employ about thirty people. They average about twenty-nine dollars an hour, uh, which is a good wage, uh, in retrospect today. Um, we do fully pay ourselves all health insurance for everybody who works with us. Uh, we see between four hundred and fifty and six hundred people a day at the store on a regular basis. Uh, we do about sixty deliveries a day, so we're out there in the community. We do discounts for vets, seniors, uh, medical issues, first-time patients. Uh, we have ten parking spots in the rear, and of course, the whole street in the front because there's very, very little retail in the block we're in, and it's no coincidence that our address is four two zero zero Lincoln Boulevard, for those who want to know what four twenty means. We have twenty-four hour armed guards. We have a very close relationship with Pacific Division. We're constantly being asked to let them review our cameras outside and around the area when there's a lot of crime in the area, arsonists that have been burning garbage cans in the back and people getting mugged on back streets, and we've been able to help them solve a number of crimes in, in the Pacific Division area. We are involved in the community. We sponsor the Venice Holiday Lighting down at the pier, down in that area. Uh, this Thanksgiving, you're all welcome to come to the West LA Community, the West LA Civic Center where we help sponsor with CD eleven, CD five, and Lindsay Horbat's office, uh, homeless feeding and clothing. We feed about four thousand people that day in the Civic Center area. It's something I've been doing for twelve years, something the organization has been doing for forty-two years, uh, and it's a great thing, and we're happy to sponsor it. So we're very involved in the community. We, we really appreciate the, you know, the being able to be here today and, and pitch what we do, and hopefully have you guys agree to give us that license in full, and you can all go home after this. It's late. Thank you all for staying.
Uh, hang on just a minute.
I'm not moving. I've been here this long. I ain't going anywhere.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you very much for your service to the city and, and the area surrounding your business, and, um, congratulations on running what sounds like a, a very viable and profitable business.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Well, there's Commissioner Lynn. Um, you stated that you have about sixty deliveries a day?
Correct.
And you see about four hundred and sixty customers a day?
Four hundred and fifty to six hundred customers a day. And that mirrors one of our other stores, quite frankly.
And, um, paying more than prevailing wages and benefits and all the taxes, um, what do you think is a model? It seems like you're doing a very successful business. What do you think is a model, uh, for your success?
So I'd encourage all of you to come and look at our stores. You know, the one, when, when we revamped the Lincoln store, it's a beautiful store. It's not a Sephora store. It's not an Apple store. It's unique. And it's the same thing we did at, uh, Culver, the old New Amsterdam. We revamped that. It, it's spectacular the way it looks right now. What makes it work? There's four things. Everybody knows baseball. God knows it's World Series time, right? So you have to hit four things in retail, and I owned restaurants for twenty-seven years. And if you miss any one of these bases, either in restaurants or cannabis retail, you're going to lose. What happens if you get a triple and the next three guys fan? Zip-o, right? Product, service, atmosphere, value. You have to hit all four. If you don't hit all four, you're going to become a trivia question at some point. What was the name of that place we used to go to over there? You know, and nobody wants to put their money into a business and have that happen. So my employees give a good, a really good customer experience. That's important. They're educated. They know all about the product. They can help you. We work with UCLA, their, their epilepsy center. They send us people. St. John's, you know, their cancer center, they send us people because we have a cannabis nurse on staff among our four stores. And we are, by the way, with one of our other stores, one of the only cannabis consumption lounges that are legal in LA County in West Hollywood. So, you know, we, we know how to build a good package, and we know how to treat people right, and that's the key. You know, and because of the amount of business we do, because all the stores that we have do these type of numbers, we have leverage with our vendors, you know, which we don't, you know, if I get a big discount, I pass it on. I want the customer. Today's economy is terrible. Don't listen to the news. It's not good out there. So we try to help the customer every way we can. So I think that's the model. You know, the model is those four bases have to get hit. If you do it, it works.
Now, and this Commissioner Lim again, you said that you do about sixty deliveries a day. Most of the cannabis retail owners that we've talked to said they pretty much abandoned the delivery. I think you were here when, when, uh, applicant said he had two hundred delivered, two hundred, uh, uh, employees and half of them were driving. Now he has zero. He's going to give up the driving side.
So there, there's a, there's a metric to how you do the driving. Okay? If, if a driver can't do five deliveries an hour, you're going to lose money. It's that simple. So we keep a very close look at the analytics to see, you know, if we're falling short, I have too many people. It's that simple. You know, and if we're falling short, before I decide I have too many people, I need to revisit my marketing plan. You know, my Pico store at one point had fifteen billboards, you know, and it took, it took our business on Pico from, you know, this much to that much in a year and a half. It was all visibility. It was eyeballs, people watching it. But you can make money doing delivery, but I go back to my restaurant experience. My restaurant was my core business. My catering was my gravy. My dispensary is my core business. My delivery is my gravy. So I don't count on my delivery. I did in two thousand and twenty when COVID hit. I pivoted real quick, okay? And by pivoting, I was doing three hundred deliveries a day, but I was only doing two hundred people on the floor. Now, a lot more people on the floor, less deliveries, which I like, quite frankly, a lot better. But you, you just have to be on top of your business. It's that simple. You have to watch what you're doing, see where it's going, and be able to pivot on a dime, you know, to survive in the economy the way it is.
This Commissioner Lim, just like any other business, you got adapt, and you have a good business model.
Pay attention. It's that simple. Pay attention. And if you don't know what you're doing, don't do it.
Uh, this Commissioner Lim, how do you compete with the? Uh, this Commissioner Lim, how do you compete with the illegal dispensary deaths, underpricing you? That doesn't create a taxes in the regulations?
Well, I certainly don't rely on the government in most cases, in most cases. I have a very tight relationship with West LAPD and Pacific Division. So one store, two of my stores are in Pacific Division on two different ends, Lincoln and Exposition. And the other one's on Pico and Centinella, which is West LA Division. Anytime I get a report of a trap shop, I immediately contact DCC Enforcement Division. And I can tell you, usually within three weeks, we get that trap shot. They're gone. So if you look at a radius map around any of my stores, you're not going to find trap shops. You can go to the valley and get ten on a block. They're like pizza places in New York. But you're not going to find that on the west side, not, not at least anywhere around my radius because that's my lifeblood and I demand to get service. But I'm reasonable and I work very closely with my local police divisions to make sure we keep our area safe and to keep it clean. You know, and to help mitigate some of the homeless issues that go along with it because that's where you get a lot of the crime. So i- it's a package. It's a whole package deal. The trap shops, they don't bother me because frankly, they're not in my area. You know, I don't have that issue. And, and we have a very good relationship with DCC. So we're able to get them to come out, you know, on call when we, and we, you know, I have people, I have guys that do ATM machines in stores and they'll drive by and take pictures and send it to me and say, this place just opened up. It popped up. Take that picture, write to the guys up in investigation, you know, bang, they're gone within two to three weeks. And that's our job. We have to protect ourselves. I got eighty-six hundred cops in LA. I got no overtime. I got no budget. You're not going to be able to have LAPD go out and do this type of work right away. They're not going to do it. They don't have the manpower. City doesn't have the money to do it. It's the advantage of being the budget chair. Anyway, thank you. It's been very entertaining.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any deliberations?
No, I think we're pretty much, I'm pretty good myself, at least.
I, I, I want him to give a seminar to everyone else.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion?
Uh, the, this Commissioner Lim, in regards to number twenty-four, DCR core record number one zero 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 five nine, for a business located at four two zero zero South Lincoln Boulevard. I make a motion to adopt the, the staff report dated October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Commissioner Farmby, a second.
Oh, point of clarification, what date did you say was the report?
Twenty-one. Yeah, the staff report dated October twenty-one, two thousand.
Yes.
Do you want to second it again?
Uh, uh, Commissioner Farmby, a second it again.
Commissioner Lim?
Aye.
Commissioner Farmby?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Let's see, the time is seven o'clock and the meeting is now adjourned.